Board meeting of August 7th, 2023. This is Select Board Chair Tom McHusson, and I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Josh Levine?
Yes.
Beneath Hemavani?
Yes.
Dan, oh, Mark Gold?
Here.
And Dan Swirburne?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
Okay, this open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar is posted on the Agenda on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat. Please note that some members are participating. All votes will be taken via roll call. All the materials for this meeting are available on the Agenda posted with the LongMeadowMA.gov website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted Agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comments. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comment section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to a panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute or unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes, three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, hunch yourself down. Any recorders? No? No. Okay, we'll now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's start with some announcements. I'll be waiting for the mobile app, and it's finally live and available for the public to download by searching Long Meadow Mass in the App Store or Google Play Store. Long Meadow Mass is an interactive app designed for members of the community to engage with the town, stay connected on important issues, updates, public meetings and agendas, events, activities, and more. Subscribe to our newsletters for monthly updates on projects and find quick and easy access to bill pay, online forums, frequently asked questions, and other department resources. Learn more about the app at www-longmeadowma.gov/mobileapp. The first responders tonight will be having for the Police and Fire Department, and it's going to be next Tuesday, August 15th, with a rain date of August 16th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Williams Middle School. The event includes food trucks, bike rodeo, canine demonstration, a LifeStar helicopter landing, and more. Please visit the town website for additional event details and updates. Greenwood Pool Senior Swim. The Greenwood Pool will be offering senior swim on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 12 noon to 1 through August 24th. The cost is $5 as offered to ages 55-plus. Please contact Parks and Recs at 565-4160 with any questions. When I first looked this, I was hoping it was midnight to 1 a.m., but no, no chance. Okay, the fall, uh, special, fall special town meeting, uh, article submission has been set for Tuesday, November 7th. At Long Meadow High School Gymnasium will be our town meeting. Petition articles are due to the Select Board's office no later than 12 noon on September 22nd. In order for a petition to be guaranteed placement on the special town meeting warrant, 100 names, signatures, and addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. In addition, information about town meetings and forums and instructions, um, to be used for petition articles, please visit the town website. And, um, so that'll be it. So Tuesday, November 7th, the big town meeting. All right. So next on our agenda is resident comments, and do we have any folks? Yes, um, you could move, sit up here and take a chair and start with your, your name and address and then.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lori Messier Ferreira, 21 Eastland Road, and I'm here about the water situation. Um, I know that we've gotten numerous letters about that, and it seems to be even more lately. Um, I'm very, very concerned about that. We have three generations of my family living in town, and we've got all three of us fitting some category. So either immunocompromised, I have a daughter who's expecting a baby and has two toddlers at home, so, um, we, we all fit into some of these categories, and I'm very concerned. Uh, we're buying bottled water like it's going out of style. Um, we were told that Brita was not going to work for this particular chemical, so we haven't been using that. I have a concern of the price of all of the bottled water that we're buying and also about just all the plastic that we're using. That's not good for any of us. Um, I put this out on the Long Meadow Forum, and we have a lot of people who feel the same way I do, and then a lot of people that said it's, it's not a big issue. They don't, they're not worried about it. Uh, for those who are worried about it, they, a lot of them said that they put on, um, filters in their home, a filter system, uh, which is fine, but what they said is, is expensive to install it and then also to maintain it. So that's an issue. Not everybody in town is able to afford that, and we're looking at five years is what we're told from Springfield, but we all know five years could be, seven years could be, eight years, we don't know. And we're relying on another town to help us out. And I know there are a lot of towns that are relying on Springfield right now for this, um, but I just think that as a town, we should be able to do something to at least help us out. Um, I'm, you know, I'm thinking of people buying houses in town. Are they going to really want to buy the houses when they say, you're fine, but if you're in these categories, don't drink the water, you know? Make sure you have a, a system. So that's an extra expense for them. So by doing something, and I'm not sure what, and what we can do, but by doing something for us at least, um, it would, it would help. We pay a lot in taxes, we pay a lot in the water bills, it's just crazy. Um, so even if there were some way that we could, um, defray the cost of the water bill to then allow people to buy a filtration system, something like that, I, I don't really know. I don't have solutions. I'm certainly open to helping if there's anything I can do, but, um, at least, you know, for all of our health and all of our safety, I think it would be good to at least keep this in the forefront and, and keep talking about it and keep trying to do something.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
For speaking to us and thanks for your willingness to volunteer if we come up with some plan.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other public comments today? Please step up and name and address. Mr. Shea?
I'm Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. On April 26th, I requested the town have crosswalk signs made double-sided and turn sign installed at the north corner of the town green. School starts August 29th. I provided the Select Board a formal written request dated July 29th, which is included in the Correspondence section of tonight's Agenda, and I had asked to be put on the Agenda. Since April 26th, I received no feedback from the town except for Sergeant Rex, the community officer, who is supportive of my request. I believe the traffic policies you will discuss later should not be applicable to my request or similar ones, and you will clarify this. This is not about installing traffic lines, speed bumps, or modifying them, installing traffic lights, et cetera. My requests are simple. The town bylaws in Article 3, Section 360-08 authorizes the DPW Director to place and maintain all official traffic signs, et cetera. I'm asking you this evening, in your later discussion, to instruct the DPW to expeditiously install double-sided crosswalk signs and replace older ones as needed. Secondly, install the turn signal on the north edge of the green on Interlong Meadow Street. In fact, many crosswalk signs are old, faded, and fairly small. Let's get as many new ones as we can. Schoolchildren, parents, and crosswalk guards are frequently buzzed by cars that I have witnessed, Sergeant Rex and school administrators have also acknowledged. My crosswalk request is consistent with what other towns have, similar to Long Meadows' mechanized crosswalks, and will be inexpensive to install. This will improve public safety for schoolchildren, parents, and crossing guards. The request for the turn signal at the northern end of the green is consistent with the western end of Grassy Gutter, and one selected board member has told me they agree with the need. In summary, school starts on August 29th. I'm asking you to clarify later, the traffic committee proposal is not applicable to my request, and most importantly, instruct the DPW to install the double-sided crosswalk signs and the turn arrow at the north end of the town green. Thank you. I will wait for the rest of the meeting. If you have any questions later on the Agenda, feel free to ask them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in. All right. And do we have any other folks with a comment, anything online? I don't see anyone on Zoom. Okay, then we can move on. We have a, an interview for an appointment and, um, so Linda Glenn, are you present? Why don't you come up and have a seat? Um, she's interviewing for a reappointment to the Community Preservation Committee, and if you could just give us your name and address and your interest in reappointment.
Linda Glenn, 50 Meriwether Drive, Long Meadow. I'm currently been serving on community preservation for six years, I guess, and I feel like the last few years I've really been able to contribute more. It took a while to learn everything. Haven't learned everything, but, uh, I love the committee. We have a great working committee, and it's a challenge with all the proposals that come in to weigh them. We wish we had an endless, uh, of money, but I feel like I'm really making, you know, a difference in terms of quality of life for our citizens. Anybody can apply for a grant or for money funds. And so that's the real grassroots piece of it that I think gets a buy-in, and then the town applies for lots of funding too. So I would like to continue my work.
Okay. Is there anything specific that you have voted on that you say, oh, I'm glad I was part of that vote?
Well, everything that I voted for, in that way. I mean, there's some little tiny projects that, um, make an impact in their own way, and, and there's obviously some huge projects. I'm always interested in, um, funding for fields and recreation, uh, so those, you know, was usually supportive of. But I think we do a great job, you know? We can't please everybody, but I feel really proud that we have a group that has weighed the applications carefully, has asked for more information if we don't have it. Um, the committee itself works very, very well together. We've got great dynamics and, um, and a super chairman, uh, so I'm glad to be part of it.
Okay, thank you. And you are a good advertisement for people who, if they're thinking of joining, just to help them as well.
Good, yeah.
Powerful committee. Uh, any questions from members of the board? Mark?
Yeah, it's Glenn. Thank you very much for applying them. One of the issues that comes up all the time or frequently with the community preservation is the, I'll call the private applications where there are individuals asking to commit community preservation funds and then ultimately town resources to a private program that frankly the, the town didn't plan on putting the resources toward. What are your thoughts about, about that?
Um, well, I think it's an issue probably, uh, maybe not so much going forward because we've, we've learned, and, and if I'm understanding your question correctly, it's where there's been a citizen application and the citizen can fill it out and do it, but the citizen can't really manage the project. Um, and it could most likely be a, a DPW left to manage it, and we might not have had the information that we need making that decision, which would have been from the DPW saying, we've got too many things on the plate and there's no way we could, even if you pass it, if the town passes it, we're going to be able to get it done in the timeframe. So we are now asking for more information on the application regarding that and who would be the point person, who would be in charge of it. Um, but personally, I support the citizens making applications. I think that's the beauty of this whole legislation, that it's not just top-down, but, um, so we've learned some things, and I'm sure we'll learn more.
Yeah, thank you. One thing I'd just point out is that sometimes I've seen these applications with the citizens that, you know, and I'm just going to use, you know, whether it's landscaping, I call the landscaper who costs $300, not realizing that the town has to go pay, you know, prevailing wages and go out for bids, and all of a sudden, what they say is $300 is $1,000.
You're absolutely right.
That's an issue for us.
That's absolutely right, and it should be an issue, and we are aware of that, and we've learned from that. You know, it didn't come up in all the time I've been on. It hadn't been an issue brought to us until maybe the last couple of years, in particular this year. So going forward, we're, we're going to attempt to address that.
Thank you. Okay? Yes?
Uh, so, so you're going to address it, do you know, are there plans on how to address it? I know it's something we've floated is, um, or at least I've floated in my head, having a sign off by the town department.
Yes.
I know you've talked about it. I know that.
Yeah, well, that's, we've certainly talked about that.
And is that, would you, do you think that would, is a good idea to have the town department?
We think we definitely need to have whichever department would be, if, if the town would be managing the issue, um, the project, that they be involved in the application process. Hopefully we can get more accurate numbers. As you know, the numbers you get for, you know, November won't be the same numbers you'll get following year if the money is allocated, but there's nothing anybody can do about that. That's, you know, you can build in a contingency, and we definitely suggest that that's done. But, um, I don't know if our final, really, we're going to discuss the application, we have a meeting next month, uh, before we put it out for people, but we were going to ask for an actual sign off or, well, what the wording is going to be, but we definitely want to have the town involved in this project and get as much information as we can.
I agree with you that I, I think it's great that citizens can apply. I just, uh, I, I think that having the town involved, if they're, we're going to have to be involved, is great to get accurate numbers, so you can have to make a better decision, because if you're working off something, it sounds like a great project, turns out we can't do it. I, I think that is very important.
No, it is. And, and on the flip side, the town department that would be managing, for lack of a better word, the project, if it were passed, needs to be upfront and honest, and if they really couldn't do it, I mean, they've got so much on their plate already, then that needs to be something we know before we pass a project along to the town.
There might be another way to do it, but if you know the town.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we're aware of that, definitely, and it's a legitimate question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Oh, yes.
Thanks, yeah. I would just add, um, so I'm the current liaison to the Community Preservation Committee, so I had sat in on some of these meetings where, um, I believe Mr. Weiss and Mr. Marinelli, um, created a pre-review process, which should help as well.
Yes.
Uh, so I don't know if that's what you want to touch on.
Um, we, no, because all, that's all part of what we're going to discuss, and I don't, we've talked about it for a long time, and there may be a little disagreement on what we think needs to be done. Um, we've researched, uh, Dave Marinelli took it upon himself and was wonderful to research other towns and their applications and their, but, and, and we've reviewed some of those, and there's good ideas there. There's some that we don't think we need here because we're a much smaller town than some of the cities.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for going in.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good meeting.
Yes, we'll be attached. We'll be making the appointments. And, um, there's a, a memo that says the Agenda for appointments to boards and committees. Make a motion for appointments.
I'll move it. We appoint Michael Zeller to the three-year term expiring June 30th, 20, uh, 2026, to the Board of Assessors.
Okay, we have second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, we will roll call vote.
Yes.
Huh? You two regular?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor. All right. Those opposed? All right. And then?
I'll make a motion. We appoint Stephen Vence to the Capital Planning Committee for a three-year term, also expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, second. Um, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Make a motion. We appoint Donna Linn Chiaza, who a three-year term, the Council on Aging, Board of Directors, expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Opposed? Okay. Opposed?
I'll make a motion. We appoint Sarah Morgan and Amy Clark to, uh, three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2026.
I think that's the old version that I'm new on that doesn't have Sarah Morgan on there. It's just Amy Clark.
You serve for, well, this is.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, that, well, what, what it's going to do is we cut five people for three spots in the next.
Four spots.
Four spots, right. So somebody.
So you're making a motion to move Sarah Morgan there. Under the historical.
That's the problem.
Yeah. I mean, I. Yeah, or, or they'll go for it. I would draw my, you know. Well, I was going to say, the other, the other way we could do it is, you know, since Amy Clark has applied to vote, we could have her just do the historical commission and then not do the historical question.
All right. I'll, I'll amend my motion to appoint, uh, Amy Clark to the.
Historical commission.
Well, you see, I think we're going to not do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll, we appoint Amy Clark to the historical commission.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, who opposed? And the historical commission, we have four seats. Five applicants. Clear motion.
Sure. Um, so I, I moved to appoint Jonathan Jordan, Andrea Tapier, Sarah Morgan, and Sarah Grisleck Fernandez to, well, do I have to separate them?
No.
Yeah, so I'll do, so, um, so scratch that. Um, I moved to appoint Jonathan Jordan and Andrea Tapier to the, uh, two three-year term, uh, three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2026. Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay. Next motion?
Uh, so I moved to appoint Sarah Morgan and Sarah Grisleck Fernandez to the two alternate three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We're second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And now we go to the tree committee?
I'm going to appoint L. Seepel to the tree committee.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right. Thank you. And, um, so next we will go to Select Board comments. Um, do we have any comments? Mark Gold?
Uh, if you recall at our last meeting, we had a petition from Verizon to move some home posts for a project that we thought was many years out. So I, I went, I was at the, uh, County of God Planning Commission's MPO, which is their Metropolitan Planning Organization, and I mentioned that they said, the, the project is definitely 2025 at the earliest advertising for a late 2025, uh, potential bid construction, but nobody in Boston had bothered to tell the utilities that this was delayed. Based on my comments, I guess they're going to look back to the utilities and tell them that, that doesn't mean that Horizon might not start moving the polls, but they had no clue that the project had been delayed, and in fact, they, the PVPC, they, they acknowledged that project is delayed, and hopefully somebody will get in touch with the utility posts and clue them into the timing. So we were right, they just didn't have a clue. I just thought it passed that long.
Right, okay. Any other comments?
Thank you. Yeah, I did want to, I just wanted to read an email from a resident since they couldn't be here today. That's in regards to the fiber optic broadband discussion we've been having over the past couple of meetings, so I could just read briefly here. Um, uh, this is from Dr. Stephen Locke, uh, 98 Brooks Road. Um, can you please pass, uh, Dan, can you please pass along during this evening's discussion about a fiber optic alternative to Comcast expanding cable for broadband internet? My recent experience of having drops in internet service while I was treating patients using a secure video conferencing app for, uh, tele psychiatry, when that happens, I also cannot access the patient's electronic medical record and cannot send electronic prescriptions to their pharmacy. Not only is the unreliability of my Xfinity Service a threat to my livelihood, it's also a threat to patient safety and public health. The town needs the advantages of competition among vendors to increase their attention to customer satisfaction. Currently, a public health expert predicts that fifty, uh, public health experts predict that 50% of the public will suffer from a mental disorder during their lifetime. Following the pandemic, most behavioral health practitioners are now providing their treatment using telehealth and depend on reliable and secure broadband internet access. Long Meadow needs to ensure that the town's telecommunications infrastructure can provide reliable and affordable service to allow residents to be able to work from home. Um, I'm eager to participate as a volunteer with considerable experience in telehealth and IT in the planned task force to address this problem. Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Yep, okay. So if we think about, uh, any other Select Board comments? All right, and then we'll move on to our Town Manager's Report. Lynn Simmons?
Um, so an update on some items that came up at the last meeting. First one is stump grinding. There was a question raised about grinding location prioritization. There are between 200 and 300 stumps that need to be taken care of that have accumulated over the last 10 years. Originally, DPW was going to start with the oldest location first and move forward from there. However, after reviewing the list and meeting with the contractors, it was determined that a more efficient process would be needed. Each stump location requires a dig save mark out. There are two different skill sets apart for the work. The first is stump grinding, and that contract was awarded to Northern Tree. The second is the excavation and removal of the wood chip debris and the, um, loam we brought in and, um, the area seeded with grass. That contract was awarded to Arment Construction. Both contractors have to work in unison, so there's little to no lag time for thinning of the area and filling the hole. The most efficient way to do this work is to divide up the town into sections. The contractors are going to go section by section, and I'm pleased to say that significant progress has been made since the start of this fiscal year and that the backlog of stumps has almost been fully dealt with. Moving forward, when trees are cut, stumps will be removed at the same time, so we will not continue to have this list of stump removal grow. And another item that was brought up at the last meeting is in regards to the high school landscaping. The DPW prepared a broad scope to solicit quotes for both the high school and adult center landscaping work. The DPW met with each interested contractor at the high school, walked through the scope and the areas that needed works, they would have a full understanding of the work they would be quoting. That process is not required. DPW could have just selected a contractor from the state bid list. However, uh, they chose to get quotes so that we can try to find a vendor that would give us the best price and also have an understanding of what was being asked so that we could get as much done as possible. They are actively getting quotes right now and, uh, they will be having a contractor clean up the areas before the start of the school year at the end of this month. And that work will continue on, on an ongoing maintenance cycle throughout the rest of FY twenty-four. Um, there were some photos attached to my report that show you some un-maintained and overgrown areas that will be cleaned up and removed. Uh, there's also some areas where some plantings will be reestablished because either they didn't take initially or they have sent side. There was some stainless steel cabling along the back of the building where some plantings were supposed to line up, so those will be reinstalled. Um, and then in the future, there's likely some trees that need to come out, but that's going to have to be done at a different time with a different contractor, uh, with likely some different sources of funding. And, um, where they also are cleaning up the, uh, islands along grassy gutter. We're not entirely sure how far this budgeted amount of money will go, but we're gonna actively be monitoring it as we prepare for the FY twenty-five budget. I do wanna note, uh, there's a further update from this morning, uh, with the current, uh, construction contract that DPW has. The, um, contractor was on the, the high school grounds this morning cleaning up all the dead vegetation, so it did need quite a bit of progress taking out everything that has, has died and, uh, was overgrown. And so that, that's already a huge step in the right direction. And then the other contractor, once we have one on board, will come in and do the smaller cleanups that are needed. Uh, an update on Bliss and Greenwood pools. AE Comm, an engineering company that was hired by the town, has completed its design work for both Bliss and Greenwood pools. We're still waiting on cost estimates and then we will review those options to figure out how we're gonna fund the work. Ideally, we'd have funding available this fall so we could go out to bid and have the work happen over the wintertime so that the pools would be ready to open for the summer season next year. But as soon as I have cost estimates, I'll bring those back to you. As we prepare the fall warrant, I'll be keeping a close eye on whether or not we have some free cash available or some other options to fund that work. Uh, if not, that, um, we'd have to look at the annual town meeting next year. These projects are considered maintenance, so they would not be eligible for CPA funding. Um, and then one positive update regarding Greenwood Pool, we've made a pool pass available at stores library, so users can go to the library just like they do for a museum pass or taking out a book and they can take out a, a pool pass for the day using their library card. Um, the household hazardous waste program, it's a program that's been in place since twenty nineteen, but I did wanna highlight it as we are starting a new fiscal year and contracts just been signed. The town contracts with New England Disposal Technologies to provide residents with a location to, um, dispose of hazardous waste. Town covers up to fifty dollars of disposal costs per household annually excluding latex paint. The town has an invoice for those costs and, um, any DT household hazardous waste properly disposes of them. They're located at one ninety East Main Street in Westfield, a program for Long Meadow residents only, no funding extended to businesses. Um, and residents can bring items in excess of that fifty dollars, but they could be paying for it at their own expense. And there's a listing in here of the times that they're open, Mondays and Wednesdays nine to four, Saturdays nine to one, and you can find all of this information, including a list of products, um, on the town website. Um, as many of you know, we had some heavy rain last week, uh, and we experienced some flooding here at the adult center in gymnasium. This has happened before, but the amount that we experienced this last time was in excess of what we had seen before. We did unfortunately have to close the gym for several days and allow the floor to dry out. We had some air quality testing that had to be done. Luckily, all of that, um, worked out well and we were able to open the gym today. DPW has called in the flooring contractor to take a look at everything more closely, and we are also, um, working with an engineer and, uh, the on-call construction company to make some drainage repairs. Um, I'm sure that there will be questions about this that I can try to answer, but some of that will be, um, uh, I, some of that I won't have answers on right now. And, uh, FEMA grant award, luckily, I've been bringing some great grants award announcements to you in the last few months, and this is another one. So the, the fire department this time had applied for a FEMA grant through the Assistance to Firefighters Program. This, um, there's two phases for this. Program one was, is to replace ten sets of firefighter protective clothing, which includes helmets, boots, hoods, gloves, coats, and pants. The value of this award is fifty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars. And program two is specific to firefighting equipment. They applied for a replacement of the more, majority of our fire hose. Um, it's either it's reached end of life or at the end of life per NFPA standard, so this would have been a capital request in the very near future, but I'm happy to say they were funded, um, for a hundred and four thousand dollars. So the total grant award's a hundred and fifty-six, eight, eighty-seven. It does have a five percent match of seventy-eight hundred dollars. Um, and again, both of these would have been capital projects in the future, but, um, with this grant award, we won't need to do that. And as I mentioned in the, uh, announcements earlier tonight, we do have a new mobile app. It's interactive, um, designed for members of the community to get access to information very quickly and easily. Um, we have links there for public meetings, events, projects, um, online bill pay, parks and rec, trash and recycling. They, we've seen, um, at the time of this posting, uh, we had two hundred and fifty downloads, we now have two hundred and seventy-five downloads, and we have a goal of five hundred downloads by the end of this calendar year. So hopefully with, um, the promotion of this and, uh, sharing this information, we can reach that goal. And that concludes my written report tonight. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Okay, um, I just, I did a couple of things. Uh, one is the, the idea of, uh, taking a book out of the library and then getting a, a free pool pass. Do you know who his idea there was?
Um, it, it was partially mine because, uh, I, we had a request about reduced, um, in my conversations with the town manager that I have at the adult center, there was some conversation about senior discount passes for the pool. And in talking with Barry, it's not something we offer, and so I suggested a pass that we could take out at the libraries similar to what you see, you know, when you go to Mystic Aquarium or Old Sturbridge Village, and a lot of the libraries have that offering.
That was a great idea. Thank you for doing that. Uh, and the other one, just to be clear, that, so the, um, hazardous waste products, uh, when, when people go to, uh, one night at East Main Street in Westfield with their old paint and so forth, will they just, will they need to show an ID to show they have Long Meadow residents?
Um, that is a good question. I can find out. But I would imagine you would need something.
Okay, all right, great. That's it, and, uh, we have questions? Josh?
Uh, so it's on the mobile app. Um, I, I haven't really played around with it much, uh, but it looks good. Um, but, so the alerts, is that, uh, will that get alerts like the Code Red that go out where you, where we get the same information there? So I've never really been able to get that work for myself.
Sure, so alerts are not directly tied into Code Red? We, we can do that on our.
I think that'd be a good idea.
On our end, it would just, it requires more administrative work, but it's something that definitely can be done. The, um, vision that we had for alerts was to, you sign up for cat, different categories that you want information on. Um, one of them, what that we're working on is a trash and recycling schedule, but if there were a delay, if you signed up for that, you'd automatically get a push notification to your phone if it was going to be delayed that day.
That's great.
It would be townwide, though, we're not able to drill it down to just your street, but, I mean, we all ignore those notices if they don't pertain to us generally, so it, it's still better than what we have right now. Um, but in terms of Code Red, uh, we can work on something.
Yeah, I know that. My wife will get alerts, or she'll get a call, we don't have a landline, but she'll get a call because she's working at home. I'm in East Long Meadow during the day now, and get the same call. So I think if, if I was able to, if I was able to get it through the app, I think that would be nice, and it could make it more valuable to people.
Absolutely.
Um, and then, uh, the adult center flooding, so I remember that last year, was it the same exact spot?
Yes.
Or was it not addressed last year? I know that that was something the building committee was looking at.
Yes.
And so is it? I mean, I, I know it's a stupid question, but now are they really gonna look at it? Can fix it?
Uh, it's going to go to the DPW's end.
Okay.
It's, um, it doesn't quite hit the threshold of the building committee project, it's not a vertical construction, and hopefully will not be the monetary amounts that would go to them, and it's the DPW's end.
Okay. And then, uh, finally, is, is that Bliss Pool? Uh, or Bliss? Field yesterday, next to the pool, which looks pretty rough. It's got giant plants growing, and I, I told people I'd read your report and that we were, there was some movement on it, they were thrilled, they really thought it was never gonna open again. So I, I think it's, I'm really happy to get some good news, it's the number one thing people ask me about, so I'm, I'm really happy to hear that, and I hope you can get it on the phone, so thank you.
Any other?
Yes.
Thank, um, yeah, first I'd wanna just say thank you, Lynn, for the work on the grants, that's, I think you said over almost a hundred and sixty thousand?
Just this one, yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and then in regards to the, the mobile app, I just get so excited because this is one of the things that, as you know, when I ran, I was really excited to, um, try to push this, and I appreciate your support, um, you know, bringing that to light. Um, with that said, if we can maybe send out a mailer with our, with our bills or put an insert in there to notify people, I think that would.
It's a great idea.
Help, you know, get people, um, to sign up. But yeah, no, this is a great update, so I appreciate it.
Hmm, any other comments on the report? All right, then let's move on to own business. We're looking for approval of the June fifth meeting minutes.
And will we approve the minutes of the select board June sixth, twenty twenty-three?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor? Great. As now we, uh, we continue the useful fiber conversation, um, and we discussed this on July seventeenth, and it's also on the, uh, fiscal year twenty-four goal list and the town member, the town manager's prepared a memo with information, recommendations. And Lynn, you wanna share that?
Sure, um, uh, uh, this is a big topic, so I thought it might be helpful if I, I just did a little research on what some of the communities around us have done, because it's not an issue that's unique to Long Meadow, and there's some different ways of solving it. Uh, so in this memo, you'll see what surrounding communities have done or in, are in the process of doing. Um, I also want to just, uh, caution that this is a long process. Every community I've talked to is still in the process. It takes two to three years to get to a point where you're even going out to bid, if that's the route you wanna go. Um, and even if you are hands-off, like Agawam is, you are, um, at the mercy of a private vendor who has to negotiate with utility companies to get access to those poles and get permission from DPU to attach. It is a lengthy process, no matter what we choose to do, so I just, I wanna start there. Um, because anything municipal does is always long, but then you add utilities and state agencies to this, this is going to be a while. So you, you see here, there's a snapshot of, uh, how the different communities have done this, some have been successful in getting some grant funding, um, but the Beltratown example was not for townwide, but it did complete their fiber loop for them, which is something that the town would benefit from here, our loop is not complete. Uh, and then in terms of, um, you know, approach to take, I gave some recommendations at the very end here. Uh, after the last meeting, I did go back and talk with the assistant town manager. We looked at what the next six months of our workload looked like and whether or not either one of us had capacity to take this on. Um, I think you probably know by working with both of us over the last few years that, um, we tend to be all in on something and we wanna make sure that we have the time to address something. And at this point, neither one of us have time to take on another advisory group, um, and have night meetings and, um, manage postings and minutes and gathering information. I do think this is a really important topic to, to start moving forward, so I gave some other options in there. If the board, um, wants to do an advisory group, I would suggest that one of you lead that. Um, if you don't, and then really the issue is we just need, um, competition for Comcast, um, then there's a couple other options here. And, um, I have some questions at the end that really dictate where we decide to go.
Okay, great, well, thanks for preparing this and doing this research. And the one question is the fact that we have a tower, uh, at the high school, does that help us at all?
No.
Oh, no.
Different technology.
Okay, all right. So I guess I'd ask the board, um, you know, whether, really look at the recommendations and the options. Well, uh, Lynn, well.
Yeah. Um, so Lynn, I, I think in the last meeting I was, this is kind of exactly the document that I was asking and was, was saying would be helpful, so, uh, I don't think I articulated it that well, so thank you for kind of reading my mind and putting this together. Uh, this is incredibly helpful. Um, I think that, you know, because of the questions that you posed, because of how big of an undertaking this is, um, I would, um, I think I would be supporting going with option one, uh, 'cause I think that we do have to do a lot more, a lot more work on this. Uh, there's, there's so much to explore here, and I think we've seen just from, you know, the email that Dan received that he shared with us and the interest that we've seen from the committee, I, I think that we will, we have folks in town that would be, uh, great on advisory, uh, advisory group. Um, and so, um, yeah, so I, so I think option one, and if we needed somebody from the select board to lead the advisory group, I would be happy to do so. Um, so I want to offer that up.
Okay, I mean, yeah, Josh?
Yeah, I, especially you're at the Department of Beneath leading, thank you, uh, Taylor May for. I watched the last meeting where, uh, it sounded like I, I left a bomb for your step on with this, that it just ended up on the agenda, and we're glad we, it pushed it off, and we acknowledge for that. Um, but, yeah, I, so this, I've been thinking about this a lot, 'cause I was at a East Long Meadow town council meeting for something, and they were talking about their municipal light, and they were a bit ahead of us, but they, they were talking about how much more they had to do. And, and so the municipal light plant is, um, it's just an initial step, but I don't even know if that's what we wanna do. Uh, as, uh, as I often hear in my head, Mark says, we don't, we're not, that's not our business, and the idea of owning fiber, uh, makes me nervous, so, but I, I don't know, but I, I think that we definitely wanna explore, and I know we've already, we had, we interviewed somebody for the cable committee a while ago who wanted to talk about this, who did, uh, Wi-Fi solutions in places. And so, um, I don't know how feasible that is, I don't know how feasible anything is, so I, I think we should get some smart people to talk about it. And, um, Lynn and Corinne, I know they do a good job on it, but they've been honest with us, that they can devote their time to it, so I think we should have a committee, it's a great idea.
Okay, any other? Dan?
Um, yeah, I, I also, um, share the same sentiments as Josh and, and Beneath, um, in regards to option one, and Lynn, really appreciate it laying this out for us, um, really well done. Yeah, I mean, I think we have a lot, like I've said before, we have a lot of smart people in town that have the background to, to help us. Um, just one question that I had, have we talked to Verizon, um, to see if they have the appetite to look at, um, you know, FiOS in town as an alternative? Um, or is that part of this whole process that we're kind of formulating here to be included?
Um, so I, specifically here in town, no, we have not had conversations about Verizon installing FiOS. I, that conversation has happened in a lot of other places, and they do not have any interest outside of, um, or west of.
Metropolitan.
Yeah, um, outside of Boston.
City.
That, I, I just, I don't see that being, uh, an option, but I think if, there's no harm in asking, if the group decides they wanna go that route. It would be an anomaly.
Is that? I don't know, it's, yeah, probably that Mark.
I'll make this, uh, horse sweep, but I, I support option one, and I, I think the key variables in option one are getting the right people, it sounds like we already have some people who have been interested in, I'll have to go back to my notes and others and we've got, but I'd like to suggest that we do this in the form of a town manager's task force, 'cause they're more nimble than a committee. We appoint a committee, they've got, there's a lot of burdens on a committee, and I know, and, and I, I would hope that a town manager's task force is not required with the town manager or representative either. It could be Benny who's volunteered, but it, it, it makes them far more nimble. The other thing is, I think.
The other thing is I think if we do this, we need to have very strong deliverables and deadlines because otherwise this thing's going to be, you know, a year from now, I'm still thinking about it. And if, you know, we all understand that this is going to take a long time. I think we've got to set the path early because it's going to be a long path. And if we take six months or a year to set the path, it's that much longer before we get down the end of the path. So, but anyway, I, I don't know, Lynn, a few have any comments about this town manager's task force. But if there's something like this, it seems to me because it's, because they're making a recommendation back to the select board, because they're not going to have any individual authority, I think that may make some sense.
So I think the issue comes up if you have a select board member on it and they're making a recommendation back to an elected body. I believe they're covered by open meeting law. I can double check that. In terms of a, a strict timeline, I agree with you because if you decide to go the municipal light plant route, it requires two votes and they need to be done in a certain amount of time. I think it's eleven months apart, no more than eleven months apart, no more than two months apart. So if your goal was the annual town meeting for the first vote, your deadline is March, beginning of March to decide that. So they, they have about six months to do this research, if you wanted to go that route. But I, I think that's realistic.
Okay, great. And, and the other, the other thing I'd say is, um, I would support one because all my colleagues are supportive of it. But I really, the idea of number three was actually, um, on my mind because everyone I've talked to or all the information that we have read and people I've talked to about Whip City and Westfield is sad. That's unbelievable. That's the way to go. So hopefully we, we may end up there, but, um, you know, but I'd like to see this move along quickly. And that's, um, go put Beneath on. He's hungry. Did you have another?
Yeah, I just wanted to add two things. So, um, I've said I'm in East Long Meadow a lot. I mean, I know what's going on there.
Yeah.
We could be playing catch up, but it might be worth whatever route we take here. Talking East Long Meadow quite a bit and because we don't have a piggyback on anything they're due. Um, and if they're, if Westfield knows that Long Meadow might be getting on or whoever, Long Meadow might be getting, uh, doing a similar thing, they can start making contingencies for that now. Um, the other thing I was just thinking of, the, we've been working on the LCTV contract for an incredibly long amount of time. And what, anything that we do here, I think we need to look to the future of how we're going to, uh, interact with the public for our, um, so if there's something that, we just keep in mind that this may be the way that we are going to communicate with our residents. Uh, so just something to keep in mind that funding may need to include, uh, running LCTV. I, I don't know the future of cable TV, um, but that's just something I thought we should think about.
Yeah, that's very good thinking.
Yeah, uh, completed with Mark that we need to, you know, tie timeline also because something like this could easily lose momentum and people could easily lose hunger for it. So, um, so that's, that's really important, I think. And then, uh, Josh, um, I think you're exactly right too. We should be talking to East Long Meadow. We should be talking to West Springfield who just, um, you know, they're installing, um, Whip City. Um, you know, I had a brief conversation with Senator Olivera, who many of his, um, towns, uh, are adopting fiber. And he was excited about, you know, us going down this course. And, you know, he said he'd be happy to talk about what he has seen that has worked well and what hasn't, um, in, in the towns in his district and the processes, um, that they've, they've gone through. Um, and then, you know, I, I think one thing, um, you know, the, the questions that Lynn had for the group, um, the second one about whether this, whether the goal is to just achieve an option besides Comcast, I think the answer to that is no. Um, I think that the folks in town would be, would not be very happy if we just offered kind of the same thing as Comcast, um, or, you know, or potentially worse. I think people are looking for something that's better. Um, and so, um, and I think to find something that's better, that makes sense for the town, will involve a rigorous process. And so that's why I'm, you know, more for, um, option one.
Yes.
I think the select board needs to, at some point, give this, this group some, some guidance in terms of, of the personal outcome. But are we, is our intent to provide a service to Long Meadow residents? Is our intent to monetize this, provide revenue for the town of Long Meadow? You know, they may be mutually exclusive. I would hope they're not, but they might be. You know, I've always said that we need new sources of revenue. And I even went so far as to doing a back of the envelope kind of analysis that, you know, if you get half the houses at forty dollars a month, then half that money comes to the town of Long Meadow and the other half to the ISP provider, that's pretty darn good revenue.
Let's do that.
No, but, but we need to decide that, Josh, because, because there are people out there saying, well, it ought to be, uh, you know, a service that the town pays for and just provides for the residents for free, which is very different from, you know, we're going to charge, you know, people are going to have to pay for it. And it may be cheaper than Comcast, it may be less, but it's going to be better. Is, you know, think, and, and, you know, does the town get a cut of it? Or does it all go to this ISP who's managing, you know, because installing fiber is, you know, is, is only a third of the battle. You know, it's putting something at the other end of the fiber that connects you to the internet. That's all the work and somebody managing it when somebody calls up and says, you know, I can't get my computer to work or all that kind of stuff. And that's what an ISP will, an internet service provider does is on the other end. They're going to want to get paid for it, but, you know, what's the town's? And, and so I think we need, you know, either we provide that guidance in advance or we say to this group, you know, here's some options, come up back to us and say, oh, we can do this or we can do that. And here's how we monetize it. Here's how we provide a service and here's what it would cost the town if town wanted to subsidize it. Because it's a big deal if the town subsidizes this, in my opinion. And I agree, Josh, it's not a business we should be in.
Well, we also, and then we also become the entity that's getting railed at if a doctor can't talk to a patient.
Well.
Oh, one of those services.
With the service comes liability. You're right. But, 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 you know, I mean, when we, when I looked at this eight or nine years ago, there were companies out there that said, you know, we'll pay the town five dollars per month for subscriber and we'll charge them whatever we want to, whatever they're going rate is. Maybe that's acceptable. I don't know, but you know, the town had to do nothing other than award this contract to somebody to get that. But I think it's something we need to, we need to give guidance or at least have this committee understand that there's that spectrum of it's a service or it's a monetized program.
Right. Well, the other side would be that it would have to be monetized, I would think, because if we need to invest money in fiber, if we have to take out loans or bonds, you know, that we have to pay those off and, and so people.
Unless you get the company to make the capital investment because they're making the money. I mean, that's.
Right. Well, the more they invest, the more they make, the more we invest, the more we, we make. And the thing is that we can borrow money or, you know, borrow money at a much lower rate as a municipality. So, um, there's a chance for us, you know, for things to happen. And, but the state, you know, as the state, they're not, there's no incentives. They're not doing anything.
Not that I'm there. The grant that mentioned, is mentioned in here for Belcher Town was for municipal fiber, for their municipal buildings and public safety complex.
Okay.
But it does, there is some, a lot of communities, when they do install municipal fiber, they leave some state, they get an agreement for more space than they need with the, uh, thought that someday they may have a townwide municipal fiber. So it can be a little bit easier. Not sure what happened here when Long Meadow strung our fiber. Um, we'd have to look at that. I mean, there's a lot that goes into this. Two other pieces of information and when I had some conversations with communities. One is that they initially thought they'd be townwide and then they had to scale it back and do pilot neighborhoods based on, um, cost and getting it off the ground and, um, signups. And then the other thing I was cautioned about is that this was aerial only. The underground buried service is a whole other issue and they weren't tackling that right now. So we do have a lot of communities, neighborhoods that are buried service.
But we own the poles. And, and even those communities with underground service have decorative light poles, which we own. Now you, somehow you got to connect that to the fiber, but we own the poles. And that's something that didn't happen in ten years.
Right. Yeah. So it's exciting possibility of things to develop. And, uh, and we know that residents are interested in this, uh, not just from the letter of Dan Row, but people have come to the board, uh, at various times. And, um, and, and it's, it's good. I personally, I, I cut the cable.
So is the question, so is the question now whether we do the advisory group with a select board member on it or a task force, like town manager's task force without a select board member on it? Right, as Mark brought up.
And Lynn, what would you think about? I mean, would there be?
Well, yeah.
It's going to be.
Because then they would just have to make, anything that came out of that. If it was a task force, um, you know, that Beneath was on, then just as long as, if they put anything out, would you have to be public so that everyone in the board can hear it? And is that the only complication?
The meetings would need to be posted, minutes would be taken.
Okay.
It'd be just like a select.
It'd be like these minutes and everything, okay. Versus.
I mean, but that, that's something we can help with internally.
Okay.
I'm not, not necessarily staffing the meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not insisting on a town manager's task force. I, I just thought that was an alternative. If, if, if it works better the other way, I just don't believe. You know, I think without somebody from the select board or some other, it, it, it got the potential to be a, you know, a, an untethered kind of group which goes off and into, you know, some areas we don't want. I think we'd better off getting it, giving it guidance and taking the cost of the guidance as a formal committee, probably.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, the good part about this technical committee is that most of the around, surrounding communities have already done so much of that work that you really just have to set up meetings with them to say, how'd you do this? What worked? Why'd you do this? Give me copies of what you did. Well, everyone will share everything. So you already have a great starting point.
Okay.
And, I mean, we're happy to make some of those introductions or gather some of that material so that your first meeting could be, you know, already three meetings ahead.
Do we know Enfield? Is there anything?
I don't know. I only checked with Massachusetts Communities because of the DPU.
Yeah, I wonder if Enfield, because if anything's running that way, they might not use a, a Westfield or Set Padley. But anything running through us or to them would be through us.
Josh, an interesting point, I, when I first talked to some companies, they literally did a Google Maps look at the town of Long Meadow and they said, what are these buildings? There were schools and, you know, the senior center. And they said, because we could put antennas on them and they have this kind, they said, you know, there's spillover to Enfield. Would you mind if people signed up? I said, well, we get our share of their, them signing up. What do we care if somebody from Enfield, you know, signs up and participates? If the town's making five bucks per month for a person or something.
Yeah, or Enfield might even have something right now.
They might, but, but the fact is that if, if these are aerial, and I'm sure they're going to be wireless systems, you know, they, there is spillover. We're very difficult to say we're going to cover all of Long Meadow without.
Yeah.
Being covering some of East Long Meadow and some of.
Doesn't stop at the border.
Right. Un, unlike your phone system when you go to Canada, which somehow absolutely does stop at the border and I've never figured that out.
Okay, so then do we have a motion and, uh, the type of?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we form a, a advisory group to explore municipal broadband options and appoint the Neath Commodity as the select board representative to that group. And we begin at our next meeting advertising and selecting members.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
How many members? I'm sorry.
Let's see replies. I, I think a minimum of five, but let's see who replies.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll look for five members, uh, for the advisory group. The motions we made in second. Do we have to vote this? Um, okay. Um, so, um, yeah. No, I can't.
All in favor.
Huh?
All in favor.
No, all those in favors? No, we don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, all in favor is fine.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, no opposed. Okay. No, because the, the original thinks that we were going to have, um, voting, we would have to online vote.
We have to.
We have to roll call though.
Um, can I just make a quick comment? This, the comment is something that Josh just said, and I think you just said you cut the cable. I think, I, I hope what you meant is you cut your cable TV, but you still have internet, probably. No, no internet, okay.
No cable.
Okay, you just use your phone system. All right.
Use my phone.
Because what's happening, I think, in, in the tendency is people are getting rid of cable TV, but most people are keeping, keeping some sort of internet, whether it's Comcast or not. Josh, to your point, the only money that goes to LCTV is cable TV. It's not internet.
Right, this has been a big stick in the point.
And, and, and it's going to get, it's getting worse.
Yes.
And not, you know, it's, it's a situation that I'm sure Comcast as a corporation realizes their revenue from cable, TV cable is dropping and they're trying to become a, you know, a cell phone company and an internet, you know, all that kind of stuff. I think it's something that people need to understand through the board, that's all.
Okay, so great. Um, congratulations to me. And, and, uh, good luck. We've, yeah, we stepped up there. This is going to be, uh, something that's going to generate a lot of discussion in the future, that's for sure. Um, so next we move to, uh, a traffic county policy and a committee update. The town manager prepared a draft policy update for a review and discussion. And will this be something we've just discussed tonight?
My, my goal.
In the future meeting, we'll take a vote on it.
However you'd like to handle it.
However you'd like to handle it. So.
It's been our both.
Yeah, so, um, so we have.
I sent this out to my, uh, very active neighborhood. So we'll be hearing from folks on that, I think.
All right.
Just a warning.
And, um, so basically is, um, yes, Mark.
You know, the policy at the beginning, I'm, you know, kind of, doesn't, doesn't concern me too much. What, what I wanted to make a couple of comments on is, is the, the process by which people go to the traffic committee and seek a stoplight, a stop sign, a speed bump or what. And, and, you know, I think if we've learned anything in the last year and me in many multiple years is that sometimes the person who complains the loudest isn't necessarily representative of the neighborhood. And, and, you know, the, the application that you show, you have here, that somebody's got that says, you know, to the best of your knowledge, uh, you know, it says, you know, who else or how many people in your neighborhood or, you know, that kind of thing are, are involved in this. I, I think that we ought to require multiple people to, to come to a, to, to petition for changes. I think it's nice when somebody says I've identified something, but if they want a stop sign in their neighborhood or a speed bump in their neighborhood or lines painted on their street, you know, for us to jump through hoops because somebody took the time to commit through and, and submit a form, to me, is, isn't as productive because we may not know whether they're representative of more than one person. And that just jumped out at me at this thing. And I don't know how we make the citizens' involvement more, uh, involve more, more representative of the neighborhood. But I think we need to somehow figure out a, a way to do that. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves with a lot of requests that don't, you know, don't, don't get support.
And I think that that's the basic struggle of government job. And that we know that when more people involved in government, whether it's town government or national government, that we make better decisions. And, yeah, getting people to, to answer letters and to step up and go to meetings and, and make comments on, even if it's traffic or regardless of what it is, has always been the challenge. Yes.
Yeah, um, and so my, my biggest comment was, I, we have to find a way to make sure that we're hearing from groups, not just one person or a few people, um, because they will monopolize the town's time and our time on this. Um, and I know in the application it says, uh, letters of support from ten percent of the residents of the street. I guess the issue there is, it, how do you consider, what's the street? Um, if it's three people on the street, then it's one person can apply as much as they want. I don't know. I think some way to think about how to, how to manage that. Um, and, but I, I, I think that, that's the biggest issue, just making sure that we are getting consensus, that people think there is an issue and even that have some ideas of what they want to do. Because if everyone comes in and we have a public hearing or we have five people and they all want a different thing, I don't know if that's that helpful rather than the residents.
the residents talk before they come to us. And it's fine to just say, we want to talk about, we have an issue, but I would, more pre-work is going, and I think it's better for the community too, to get together and to figure out, and if something needs to be done, how, just a vague idea of how to do it.
Josh, there's a flip side, or not a flip side, but there's the other consideration there too, huh? I'm going to use an actual example. You know, I'm still niffed by the fact that Winnetuck is closed. You know, from the perspective of the whole town, it made no sense. You know, from the five or six people on the street, they thought it was a great idea. And so, even if the street wants something, you know, the problem is, we're going to have people come here and say, you know, I want to barricade across my, you know, we all saw the, well, they shouldn't close off this end of Ellington and this end of Farmington and make cars go, you know, just because the people want it, we've got to have some process of saying, we're not jumping when somebody's, you know, you know, just because we got five people or 10 people or even 70% of the people on the street saying, we ought to do something. I think there's got to be a reasonableness of responding, otherwise, everybody in town wants their street closed. I will tell you, every street in town has too much traffic, every street in town they're driving too quickly, every street in town is like that. And if we throw open the gates to say, well, all you got to do is get 10 people on your street or five people on your street, and we'll do this, you're going to end up with every street closed, speed bumps throughout the whole town, and a mess, in my opinion.
Well, that's why we, that's why we notify, that's another thing I thought we should notify more than just the applicant, because I want everyone, because I think if something like that happened on my street, I know that I would, me and my neighbor would object, we talked about it. It's to be blocked on either side, I think it's a terrible idea, maybe I shouldn't say allow, but against it. But we can't bring reasonable suggestions to the board, because we have to be the ones to be the arbiter of it.
But it shouldn't be, excuse me, Tom, should it be us, or should it be professionals who are traffic, you know, we have people in town, our police officers and others, who are professional traffic, you know, people who understand it, who see the bigger picture behind Long, beside Long Meadow, they may understand state laws, and I think it's important for us to pay attention to that. I mean, you know, I've moaned and groaned a lot about people from the DPW, from the DOT, Department of Transportation, but they're professional traffic people. And sometimes, I don't like what they do, but they're not doing it out of spite, they're doing it out of, because that's what the best practices say they should do, and we don't necessarily get that.
That's why we have the advisory group. Well, that's helpful, you know, but we also look at state organizations like that, and you say, well, you know, here's this street that, you know, mapping services are sending big trucks down, and it's a regular residential neighborhood, and they will say, clearly, we don't know what to tell you, you're on your own, you have to make your own decisions. There's some times where we have to make decisions as a board, as a town, as a committee, and we do the best we can. And, you know, when you look at, one of our primary goals is to keep our citizens safe. And I think that trumps a lot of other things. And so, you know, whenever someone brings us an issue that is going to be safer for our community, we want to make sure that gets dealt with effectively and efficiently. And, you know, in terms of past decisions, you know, we can only hope we make the best decision at that point, and, you know, I mean, I guess you can always bring things back, but, you know, the other thing that people do, you know, in a science board, if you want to make sure that you have a representative sample of the street, well, then you would do a random selection of, you know, 10% of the people on the street. You wouldn't just say, I'm going to talk to 10% of the people who are like me, who I, you know, who I appreciate and I can talk to, and there's other people, I don't want to talk to them anymore, you know? But if you do a random selection, then you might get closer to what's really going on, you know? And, you know, and maybe that's something the town should consider before moving forward on some of these actions, is to just get a random sample, you know? It's hit and miss, and see where things lie, you know? Yes. That gets me to it. I think that that would be a huge resource during, I can't imagine, we'd have to knock on doors, it would be... Oh, yeah. Of course, yeah. Oh, now everyone's going to answer. That would be a lot of work. But that gets me back to the initial review. Right now, it says the Traffic and Road Advisory Group gets an application, reviews all the data, gets a traffic study, staff observes the traffic patterns, I don't think, that can't be the first step. I think you have to, you have to review it first and then make a decision, and then decide if it warrants further study. I don't think, we can't get a traffic study for every, every request that comes in. We certainly can't send somebody else to look at every person, at every request that comes in, because we just don't have the manpower or the money. PBPC gives us some traffic studies a year, right? So, but we have to use those judiciously, I think, so that's, we just, you know, Mark's right, because we have to, our first step has to be, does this make any sense? And if it doesn't, we can't waste a lot of resources on it. So we got to, I think we have to pick and choose, the TRAG has to pick and choose what is, should be dug into. And then, we're going to get recommendations, and, you know, if they review ten applications and let them say, no further action, we don't recommend any further action, unless we feel strongly otherwise, I think that's the end of it. Unless, well, it should be, I think. Okay, and just for those of all, what you referred to as the TRAG, that would be the Traffic Road Advisory Group. Whoever read this, I mean, I'm sure. Yeah.
No, I completely agree. I mean, so I think this just, it's kind of rewriting this, so TRAG kind of has more authority, right, like at the beginning, to say whether they should move forward. Yeah, I completely agree.
Like, if an application comes in and says, I want a stop sign outside of my house, TRAG would say, no. And I found that, I was reading some of the references, and it was very interesting, the stop sign study, that's something people don't know about. And when you read about it, hey, that makes perfect sense. You stop here, you speed up to 35 miles an hour to get to the next one, rather than going 30 the whole time, so, that was really good.
Yeah, and I find that interesting as well, because I think a lot of these applications, my hunch is that there's going to be a losing answer to that.
Yeah.
Right away.
Not our department.
Yeah.
We can't do it.
Right.
Or it won't help, unfortunately. And in this memo, it also does remind people that we do have, if there's a concern that, like, as we move along with this committee and we appoint people and move things, but if there are genuine concerns that people have, complain, those could be taken with this far. You know, you don't have to wait till this committee is up and running, they would be willing to look at anything that they thought was dangerous immediately, and, you know, and do what they could while this committee is being awarded that. Any other questions on this initial, yes?
I guess, I'd like to just ask, I mean, where did this come out of, and what, whose, you know, thought process gelled into this, and why is the current system not working?
The current system is, talks about traffic calming as an application, talks about a traffic committee, does not say who the traffic committee is or what they do. So it was an attempt, I think, I don't want to speak for the creator of it, it appeared to me like an attempt to address traffic calming issues, but fell short of fully grasping the issue. And then, we all know why we're here right now, with what we dealt with with the line striping. But not only that, I mean, DPW gets requests all the time for stop signs, they have one right now pending for children at play, which is addressed in this policy as well. Where this came from, it's modeled after traffic calming policies in other communities. So I looked at a cross-section both in Western Mass and in Eastern Mass, and kind of molded them together based on what I thought would work for Long Meadow. Some of the ones in the eastern part of the state are not, they don't have the same traffic issues we have, so I did not include all of that. I do think that the application itself needs some work, but I wanted to make sure that I got something to you, so we could just start the conversation. I agree that the neighbors and neighborhoods should be part of the application process before any of us spend any time on it, because it does have an impact on more than just the one person applying. And I, we saw it with Ellington, and it's something that we, at the traffic committee, that had dealt with, where the neighbors wanted a fix, most of the neighbors wanted something, we put up those reactive skate signs, and the one house we put it in front of, they weren't happy with it. So, you're never going to make everyone happy, but I think it's important to at least try to get as much of that input from the start than just moving forward. So I think the application itself could use some work. I don't know what the right solution is there, I don't know what the magic number is. Some of the other communities I looked at would not even take a trapping, traffic calming application if there were less than five houses on the street. I don't think there's many situations here, if any, that that applies to, but it did recognize that quantity is part of the problem too.
Well, I just went, so, I mean, how difficult would it be, so, example, we had a traffic calming situation where we decided to go on a line down the street, right? I mean, how difficult would it be for the town with all 25 houses on that street, to get through to people and see if, randomly selected? I mean, do we have someone to do that? I mean, that doesn't seem like that much work.
My, well, my question, I guess, would be, who would do that? We do not have capacity at the DPW to do that.
Tom, if you've, if you've got some time, you can do that.
I think some are interns, but, but yeah, you know.
And I also think it's important to point out that we've only had two traffic calming applications in three and a half years. I think that, like, we will get some more, and I think there was also a, let's see, I don't think there was an awareness of the traffic committee that there was a traffic calming policy. And that predated me, that predated some of the DPW directors, there just was a reaction to an email that would come in and they'd put up a stop sign. And in reality, that really shouldn't be anywhere operating.
Okay, well, I'd say if we only get one of these, or two of these every three and a half years, so, you know, making 25 home houses, you know, isn't, I think the board, you know, could consider that maybe we should be doing that, to make sure that we don't have incurred costs that, you know, to remove these traffic calming situations where the road has to be, you know, grinded and then, you know, we've got to shake.
And the issue we have there is there's no central database for cell phones, and most people don't have house phones anymore. I don't even know logistically how we would go about that. They do go door to door when there's no water, but that's an actual life issue.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think that this addressed some of the big issues that came about from what happened at Ellington, but I agree that there are some shortcomings that need to, that we need to iron out. And I also think that, you know, in terms of representing what, you know, is best for the town or what's best for a certain neighborhood, I mean, I think some of that also falls on us, because we've been elected by the town. And so, so if anything, I think, you know, that might be something where, you know, we have to kind of get a feel for that, or talk to folks and come back and figure that.
For every three and a half years, you and I will go on, knock on some doors, I'm okay for that. Okay, good point. Mark?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not taking an elephant gun to kill a flea here. If we had two traffic calming applications in three years, maybe we just needed to tweak the old process and not rewrite this to something that is pretty, I don't know, it's five pages long and fairly complex, and, are we digging a big deep hole for ourselves and creating a lot of red tape around somebody who wants to do something? I will say that, before you got here, Lynn, at one point, and I don't know how and I don't know why, but in my street and a whole bunch of other streets, it was all the, the streets in town that, you know, two streets came together, there were no signs, all of a sudden, 35 or 40 stop signs showed up around town, especially the southern end of town. And nobody knows why, and we asked the Town Manager, he said, because we decided to do it. You know, they didn't ask anybody, there were no accidents or anything, they just decided to do it. Was it right? No, but we now have them, and nobody really cared, and we didn't go through this complicated process, and, you know, we'd still be debating over some of those, I think, if that happened. I don't have to agree with them, but doesn't, I didn't get any input, so, and I learned to live with it.
Thank you. I just, I just want to come to that. You know, I don't want, we know what happens when there's no process, and that's what we don't want. And I'd much rather the process, and I know we're creating work for ourselves, but I want people to make these applications, and I want the town to be thinking about these things, and I'd rather people try to take ownership over their neighborhood and say, here's what I think we can do to make it safe, right? I want that. So, but I also want us to have a good process to do this. This is very similar to what was already in place, which was done, it's just much better, because we had a traffic advisory group, but it didn't, we didn't know who was on, literally did not name any. And that's, so it's useless as well, so I know why the Ellington traffic calming request even came in, because I was, when I got elected, I was reading your town policies, and said, huh? And nobody knew about it, and it just, that's why I went in. I'd rather people knew about it, and this is an important thing, and I know it's because I live on a very busy street, and I'm next to an even busier street, and people have cared about it since I moved in six years ago, but I want there to be a process for us to do it, and I think it's important. We're just tweaking, really.
Yeah, I think this spells out the process, I don't think the process is actually that complicated, you know, from what's laid out here. I mean, there's a traffic advisory group that takes applications, you know, we've said that we want them to have more authority to kind of say, you know, to kind of deny or not push an application to the process, and then, you know, it spells out the criteria when the traffic, the advisory group can act on their own and when they need to come to the Select Board for traffic calming measures. So, yeah, I mean, I agree with Josh, we need a process, this spells out the process, it was not spelled out before, but I don't think it's a complicated process.
So, Tom, I can, I guess, so I have some tweaks I'd like to make to this, and maybe we could bring it back to another meeting. Some of the visions, send them to Lynn, and she can, Mike can make, and put them together. Yeah, and if anyone else has any other comments, you can send them to Lynn and Mark. And I told my neighborhood and anybody else, if they want to send suggestions to me on things they want to change, I'm happy to walk through them, and if I think there's any great ideas, or I'm happy to put them in and bring them to the board. Right, well, this is a public conference, and it's not a problem. Yeah.
Just one other thing I want to point out in here, we are also in the process of updating our Complete Streets bylaw. We have an engineer working on that right now and developing the list of complete street projects. This was a bylaw that was adopted, I want to say 2016, I could be wrong, not a year, but it was around that time, and you should have a committee that, that's your complete street policy, your bylaw, before it goes forward, it should have some public input. We did not have any public input when that bylaw was adopted before, other than town meeting, it, there was no, in building that bylaw, there was no public input, and there should be. In this policy here, I do reference complete streets, and I think it's under the TRAG role. I think I said it, where is this? But I just wanted to make sure I called that out to you, because it is something that had been noted as an inconsistency with the bylaw and the current traffic calming policy, they did not line up together. So, we would make sure that this did line up with the complete streets policy. This one includes a lot more about non-vehicular transportation, which is a component of complete streets.
It says the TRAG is also overseeing the streets bylaw.
Great, great, okay, yeah, so, I just wanted to maybe that, because I do anticipate coming to you in the near future with an update on the complete streets work that's happening, and possibly convening a complete streets review. uh, work that's happening and possibly convening a complete streets review committee.
Okay, and when that was approved by the select board, part of the enticement was that that it would be perhaps, you know, be um, more likely to get some fundings. I mean, is that still the plan?
Yes, I have, um, I'm sitting on a couple really amazing grant announcements that I am embargoed from announcing, so. Yeah. Been really, really successfully.
All right, great.
When when we did the code, you know, system, there's that whole section of traffic, if you recall, that had every stop sign and stop. Where does that fit in here and is that ever going to, does that need to get updated? Will it ever get updated?
Things we were talking about, and that's a mess. It hasn't touched them decades.
Decades, decades, right?
Yeah, it was like, probably from the forties.
Yep, so the first step was putting it in a location where people could actually see it. So it's online now. And now we need to start tackling those updates. Those are approved by the select board. So what you could do is you could task the, through me, the TRAG, with reviewing it and bringing all those recommended changes through you. Uh, and then you would vote on those and then we'd send them to the general code and they'd get updated. Uh, or you could get a, you know, a little working group together. I mean, there's a lot of ways we could do it, but there is a lot of cleanup in there.
Sorry, so what is this?
It it it's a document, I mean, that lists li- literally every every street in town and what the speed limit is. There's stop signs here, there's stoplights, it it and and at the corner of this, you can only turn, it's it's very, very complicated, like Josh, that it hasn't been updated in years and if the if the select board needed updated, believe me, there's been so many changes made, that all that stuff that I'm sure the select board never, never commented.
It was it was in a binder and placed at campus.
The examples are the on-street parking by town hall, that's two hours. Those are, those would be included in there so that if somebody parked four hours, there's a method to ticket them. Uh, same where we call it handicapped parking on public ways, all of that is in there. In cities and town, in the cities, it's in ordinance, but you have something to find it by, but we have traffic rules and orders and they're available on the general code link.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. If no further discussion, we'll we'll move on to uh, the select board liaison assignments. We discussed this a little bit last time, saying that, um, you know, we needed to open some stuff up. Beneath, he's he's taken on two large assignments.
So I'm I'm on the middle school building.
Oh, you're on it.
So I'm on.
You're on it, okay. Oh, I see, so you're on it and he's on it.
Well.
So we don't need a liaison, because I'm a voting member.
So my my liaison assignment to it lasts about two days until I, we figured out that Josh was actually voting.
He was actually there, he's voting, yeah, yes. And so it was a duplicate. Okay, well, that was. I didn't, I guess I got me, sorry, I didn't have time for that. So then we look at, um, you know, some of the liaison assignments that um, people could offer. I I would be willing to offer a few um, for the health committee, the, I mean, perhaps a cultural council. Really.
I believe there's thirty-one total and beneath is the only one without any right now, technically, besides the uh, I think you do work on the capital planning, which is a group, which is not a select board appointee committee, so that's something different. So ideally, each one of you could give up one or.
I I I looked at this, so it's thirty-nine, we're not going to the middle school building, uh, committee. Um, and just look at, Josh, you have nine assignments, Dan, you have eight. Uh, Mark has seven and Tom has six, so, you know, if we're going to split this up by five, you know, I think we should, we should each take six or, you know, last time you guys talked about the chair usually takes, you know, one or one or two less or something, um.
One last.
Additional, yeah, except for you. Um, so, yeah, so so we could do that, we could either, you know, we could, I could take, you know, some from Mark and Dan and Josh, um, so that I get six. And.
And then I'll be.
Or or, you know.
As a chair, I I'd be fine, I.
Sure, yeah, all right, I mean, yeah. Go deep down in the pool. I'll give up the finance committee and cable advisory committee, just you put your name down for that, too. I mean, that.
Well, I need one from you.
Oh, okay.
I gotta take, I gotta take three from.
Sure, sure, we need.
Fine, the finance committee is fine.
Okay, okay.
I think it's a good one.
Okay, great, I'll take that and then I'll take two from Dan and three from Josh.
I have energy and sustainability as well as capital planning.
Sure.
Be looking for some money.
I'm good, I'm gonna take three from Josh.
Um, do we have a tax ceiling tax pass, tax ceiling task board, I can't say, committee right now?
Not currently. We, I mean, there is one, it's it's not meeting right now.
It's not meeting.
You should take that and you should make a, make a meeting. That's something that that has fallen off a bit because our S S value is skyrocketing. We are, you know, we shouldn't be surprised by it again. It's something that I think we should start thinking about again. So I, so I will admit, I I don't have a lot of time. I don't attend a lot of meetings. I generally reach out and I don't hear from a lot of my groups, um. And I wish I had more time to to commit. So if there's anything you're interested in mine, I think you should absolutely, uh, I I should stick with the school committee. And then zoning board of appeals and board of assessors are just kind of in my wheelhouse.
Right.
So I.
And and probably planning board as well.
Um, oh, yeah, and D D E I could be a good one. I I was there at the beginning and I haven't really heard much from them, but um, I, they're active passions, that could be a good.
Yeah, or I can take the uh, you know, historical commission and historical history commission. Take those two.
Okay.
It's really into it.
Well, that, yeah, I want to take those two.
Okay.
Because I I know they're a bit of a floss because of.
Yeah, I'm looking to.
So they can use some guidance and.
Well, thank you everyone for your generosity.
Last one, go to the municipal.
Add that municipal broadband committee in there, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
That's true.
Well, that's enough.
So I could get more back up.
All right, so that's good. Uh, and now we can move to new business. And we look at the quarterly investment report. Erica Brunel, um, is in attendance and she has the last quarter's uh, investment report. And we also have it in our agenda. Erica?
Good evening, can you hear me?
As we can.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here tonight to submit my quarterly report on the status of the town's cash and investments for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. As per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the twenty million dollar provision. All banks received the highest safety rating of green from Bear Bear Bank, except for Eastern Bank, but I'll go over that in a minute. Um, and all accounts are fully insured or secured. Closing the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we have seen interest rates continue to increase. Most noteworthy was People Savings Bank, who is offering an interest rate of four, four point seven four on our daily deposit account, up from four point two seven. Um, and I will tell you that since the interest rates were increased again by the Fed, that rate has gone up. I believe as of this morning, it is four point nine in bank. Um, in short, Eastern Bank sold a portion of their security portfolio and as a result, they incurred a one-time non-operating after-tax loss of two hundred and eighty million dollars. Um, the vice president goes further in the letter and explains the financial security and confidence that they have, that their Vera Bank rating will go up next quarter. Um, they're hopeful and believe that this should be a one-time hit and we should not be concerned. I've been monitoring the bank account since, um, and have kept the balances very low in that account. It is still insured, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that you could see the whole um, situation there in the letter that's attached. The OPAB reserve investment fund also saw a positive return in quarterly investments. The quarter ended with a net gain of approximately hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and the ending balance as of June thirtieth is approximately six point five million dollars. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question. Uh, this, the OPAB, you know, that that, um, that fund, is there any withdrawals from that?
Uh, no, not at this time, no.
Just building for future. Thank you. Uh, Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, Erica, just. It, what is our reaction when, if Eastern Bank's next quarter comes out also in the yellow? Don't we have a system where we can't be in a bank if they have several consecutive yellows?
Yeah, and I apologize, I should have printed out the policy, but it does outline in our investment policy the steps that need to be taken for the Vera Bank ratings. Um, it's a certain number of yellow ratings and if it goes into red, we have a certain time period, I believe it's forty-five days, that if it doesn't increase, we have to pull our funds. Um, so we are monitoring that really closely. I'm hopeful it's going to go back up. Like I said, the vice president's really confident in it. So I'm hopeful that this will be the one quarter that we see it at yellow, but yes, there is definitely a very um, set guideline for the stages we need to take and how long we can keep the money in there if the ratings were to go down or do not rebound.
Good job, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, do we need to um take a vote on this, accept this, yeah? Just three points. Okay.
Oh, we do need to appoint uh, Eric title custodian. We do that every year. I'll move, I'll move that we in town treasurer collector, Erica Brunel, the tax title custodian uh, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter sixty, section seventy-seven B.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Well, all those are taken. All right, you're on the post. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
And so now we move additional new business. Um, and this is a dog nuisance complaint uh, which, we received a dog nuisance complaint from resident Mark Strange on one eighty-two Franklin Road, supporting this complaint will include in the agenda packet, including the Long Island Police incident the animal control officer concerning the initial investigation and the first steps. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law of one forty, section one fifty-seven, the selection board shall cause the investigation of the complaint, including an examination under oath of the complainant at a public hearing at a date to be determined. And so are any comments from the board about moving this forward to this next step?
Right, so I have a question. So we have some Mark uh, complaint as a nuisance complaint, and then we also have an email that says it's a dangerous dog complaint, which is very different.
Yes.
It's dangerous dog, destroy the dog, right, or take.
Well, the first, the first step is to do an investigation.
Well, I know, but I, do we have different steps depending on what kind of complaint? Or are we only treating this as a nuisance?
Well, I believe it's more moving to our next level, that second level, right?
Either one triggers the investigation and then there are different thresholds for dangerous dog.
Right, yeah. So it isn't, at this point, we don't know if it's a dangerous dog. Um, obviously, uh, president believes it's a dangerous dog, wants us to look into it. I think that's a fair request, um.
So we've got police report, animal control officer report, so the next step, basically rest schedule hearing?
I think we, is the investigation already done? This is the question.
It's something for you to to discuss. If you feel like there's more steps you want done, this time we we ask for any police records and um, a report from the animal control officer. There was some conversation at your last meeting about having information, waiting on information until it came to you. So we we did get that in advance. It's here in front of you tonight. You could ask for, um, I don't know, like, a a meeting with the animal control officer before you schedule a hearing. You could schedule a hearing and have the animal control officer there to you, depending on what you have in front of you and how much more you want.
Well, in the original letter, uh, I believe he mentioned some of the residents who had concerns about these these dogs. And could we get statements from them?
There's another letter and and we got another email today.
Okay.
But but including another fighter report.
All right, Mark, hold on.
Yeah, I guess the the question I have in in the original attachment with the mail and pictures from Mr. Strange, there was a, I mean, a letter at the bottom to whom it may concern, signed by another and that whole paragraph doesn't reference this this, the address, the dog, the, it, you know, and and that is concerning to me because I read it and I said, is this the second one or is this the same one? Now, the one we got today is a supportive email did reference to represent the same.
That one was also separate, that that other letter, it just happened to be compiled into one document.
Okay, so so a separate letter, so we may not, we we may be making an assumption that maybe the writer didn't intend to of putting it with that same that that same dog and same family, huh? My personal opinion, Tom.
Yeah.
You know, with the smoke, there's fire. I think we ought to, we we've got, we've got an animal patrol officer's report already. You know, at this point, I think the people who are the owners of the dog have the right to defend themselves. I think we schedule a hearing, you know? And and whether it's a nuisance dog complaint or a dangerous dog complaint, I don't know that it it matters when you schedule a hearing. I think the determination and the matters what you do, whether it's a dangerous dog or just a nuisance dog, then determines what action the select board would take.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Um, so two things, so I guess, should we ask Kim Maynard for clarification on exactly who she's talking about?
I would think so.
I kind of had the same question, too, when I read this.
My understanding that it was sent in support of Mark Strange.
Okay.
Yeah, but but it doesn't say it.
Yeah, I know, it didn't say that, but that was my understanding.
Okay, so, okay.
The answer is, yeah, we should.
Um, and then I guess, yeah, I don't know how much more in terms of investigation there is because we've got the animal control officer report, we've got the police report. Um, I guess my question would be, you know, in the animal control officer's report, uh, the Templetons have offered to make some changes in terms of putting in a gate by the front door porch. Um, I guess so my question would be, would the people that made these complaints, does that satisfy, you know, what they, you know, what they're seeking or not? Um, and I I think that that would be the only other step before we would potentially have a hearing.
I I think we should have a hearing regardless, um, because we want to be able to say, they can offer it, but we need to be able to say that you have to.
Yeah, that's the point.
And that's what we're going to do.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, that's, um, so that's not an option. Any other? So, so then, um, so we, you know, I don't know, we need to vote on scheduling a hearing if you're all in agreement on scheduling a hearing, or just put that on a.
That would be helpful to know because we have to send out public just that. What what's our next meeting?
September fifth. So is there any, like, anything that says we have to give them a certain amount of time, anything? Looks good, we'll get to the model anyways.
And did they quarantine the animals or?
Yeah, yeah.
More easily, so. Yeah.
Uh, I'm moved that we have set a dog as nuisance complaint public hearing for September fifth, uh, for the dog owned by the Templetons on Franklin Road.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Do you want a time specific or just?
Um, at seven thirty?
Seven thirty. Okay, so seven thirty on the seventh of September. All those in favor? And for matters.
Can can I also ask that, that, I don't know, if if Mike got the, an email from this Maynard, if he just reached out to her and get clarification, so even though we assume what it is, we want to invite that.
All right. So the uh, next thing we have is the authority to file lead service line inventory. I'm sorry. Blood service. So DBW is working with Tiananmen to complete the town's lead and copper line inventory required to be filled with the mass D E P in October twenty twenty-four. Tiananmen is preparing a grant application for this work on behalf of the town. With this agenda item, the select board needs to vote to off. Burn wastewater to sign this grant application. Tiananmen will assist the DBW in developing an L S L inventory and an L S L replacement plan. And with, um, for, for the application of financial assistance, drinking water state revolving fund, L S L inventories and replacement. So we are looking for, um, a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign this grant application, um, to look at this, you know, the town is old as ours, there's going to be some lead pipe around somewhere. So do we have a motion to approve the signature?
Um, the document you're reading, don't we, do you have a copy of that?
No, it's, um. Yes, we can, I can share all of that information with you. I received bits and pieces over the last couple of days and had to keep going back for more. This is a mass D E P requirement. Cities and towns will put on notice in late twenty twenty-two. You have until October twenty-four to complete this inventory, and they've made a ton of grant funding available for communities, but we need to apply for that money. We are, if all but get, been guaranteed that we would get it. If we do not get it, I will be coming back to you in September to.
To get money.
Yeah. A warrant article, fall town meeting for that work.
Okay. So your motion for?
Yeah, I'll move to authorize, uh, Mike Spirit to sign a grant for the water service inventory and mud service line replacement.
Okay, just a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
I just asked that we give a copy.
Okay, the next thing we have is a, uh, Four Things Coffee truck request. Four Things Coffee is seeking approval to serve Long Meadow on public property in their fully licensed and insured coffee truck. They've been granted approval from the health department and are requesting a written permit from the school, uh, from the select board to operate in accordance with the town of Long Meadow general by law, Chapter two thirty-six dash one. Sidewalk sales and Chapter two thirty-six dash two booth and parts. These supporting documents will include in the agenda packet. And, uh, is there anyone in attendance from Four Things Coffee to speak further on this request?
I believe so.
Hi.
Oh. Um, so we've, we've got this request, can you just summarize it for us, uh, what you're looking for here?
Yeah, sure. Um, hi, my name's Brianna Ash. Um, I'm one-third of Four Things Coffee. We are looking to park on public property in town, so this would include parks, sports fields. Um, we have had requests for like the town hall area and the green. Um, you know, the ideal situation is that we don't have to come to you guys every time we want to park somewhere new. It would be sort of a blanket permit that would cover us in, uh, whatever we agree on or whatever you guys decide on. Um, yeah, I don't know, do you have any other questions?
So, um, are there some specific locations that you, I know you mentioned sporting events, so are you looking at Wolf Swamp, uh, what you're talking about or?
Yeah, most of the fields, um, I, I would say all of the sports fields we would love access to park at, excuse me, park at, um, near town hall. Um, we live across from the green, so that area, there's a lot of traffic there. We've already talked to the library a little bit about, you know, parking in that area. I don't know how much of that is public property or what would be approval from the library. And then all of the parks in town.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
How many other questions from the select board? Yes.
Uh, I've had the pleasure of drinking, uh, Four Things Coffee, you guys are doing a great job.
Thanks.
So I, just a comment, I, I, I looked into doing this, uh, a couple of years ago. You can't go on the green at all. Um, I, I don't know if that's, there's no commercial activity on the green, uh, so just wanted to make sure. And that includes across from town hall, that's still part of the green.
Sorry.
And I, I guess, um, I, I like this application, I, I think this would be great to see in town. I have a question for any of the people who've been around a while, this has been done before in town. And, um, second, if there's, if Parks and Rec has been consulted on whether there'll be a parking issue at the, at any of the fields. I know sometimes Wolf Swamp does get pretty packed, and I don't want us, uh, people not being able to park or trying to have it park on the street because there's a coffee truck there. So, but if Parks and Rec has been consulted, I'd definitely agree.
That's a good question. And do you know?
I know who they have. Um, when I, I didn't follow this, um, application out because directly, it's not a town manager approval, uh, but the, I originally thought it was just for parking on the public way. So I was like, and I wasn't aware it was for, um, athletic facilities too. So I would want to run it by Barry. I know we have a lot of parking issues at Turner, so I think maybe we would just want to designate a couple of spaces where it could be safe to operate.
Right, yeah, and I can see how the, uh, very convenient for residents to have something like that happen. Um, you know, the green, I know that that's come up, um, before, is, we, we actually had a major town meeting about having a business on the green, and, um, it was a pretty big turnout. So I guess the only time a truck has been able to, to serve on the green is when they have events, right? Yeah, so like the Pride Festival or the Long Meadow Days, and then you would apply through, through them to be able to serve, you know, or, you know, operate in there, they'd have to approve you, right? So that's the only time that, you know, trucks are allowed in that, in that area. And, and it goes back, you know, it was really interesting when we had this big, you know, sort of vote on, on, uh, business on the green, because at one point, the green along Meadow was filled with business, and they passed a, uh, an ordinance, and one by one, those buildings were all dismantled and removed, and now we have this open field, and the church was actually moved from the green over to where it is on the other side. And so, um, so it's something that our town takes pretty seriously. So it isn't like we're just giving you a hard time without being on the green, it's, it's, it's got a lot of history to it. Yes, any other?
I just, I guess my concern is traffic, and, you know, we, I'm concerned about the, it's described as kind of blanket approval to go anywhere and be anywhere in town, because there are some places that I, I think where you'd want to have a coffee sales is where the crowds are, and that's where the traffic is, like you said, at Wolf Swamp Fields or Bliss Park when there's ballgames going or Turner Parks and, 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 you know, the last thing I want to do is start getting complaints that there's no place to park because there's a truck that's been sitting there for, you know, the day or the hour or the, the whole, whole event. Uh, on the other hand, it's, it's a great service to provide people, and I, I'm just wondering if there isn't some way that either Four Things Coffee or, you know, somebody from the town can do a better job of specifying locations as opposed to saying just a blanket approval anywhere you want, anytime you want it? Because for me, it'd be much easier to say, you know, gee, you know, if you want to be, I'm just gonna pick one, the town manager's parking spot behind town hall, that's probably not as, as much of an issue as I want to sit out in front of town hall on, on William Street, which may be more of an issue for somebody. Or, you know, I'm happy to be at Wolf Swamp Fields and be down toward the East Long Meadow end of it as opposed to right in the middle where, like, next to the electric car charging stations where people are trying to come and go and get by. So from my perspective, I'd much rather see something more definitive, which has locations and, 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 you know, as I was, personally, I was gonna ask you, you need to be able to plug into something, but apparently not, but I think it'd be much more, say, need for specific locations to approve as opposed to just a blanket approval.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, because we do have, um, you know, in, in, like, building there that also refreshments, and the, the money goes for the teams, and so I know that they would probably have a, a, an issue if their folks were parking right in front of them, um, but, uh, you know, people, I'm sure people would mind walking a little bit of a distance, yes.
Nothing would make me happier to drop off my kids at center and get a quartada my way up the street, but I, I just want to make sure that it's not, that it's doable. Um, so if you can talk to Parks and Rec, uh, get a sign off from the police department, I, I would feel more comfortable if we could have, uh, places where you could go and where it, it would be, uh, doable. Uh, but really, I, I want, I want you to make this work, and I, I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way.
Any, yes, for me?
Yeah, uh, Brianna, thank you for joining, uh, us tonight. Um, I've also had a chance to check, you know, uh, check out your truck, and it's great. I think, um, you know, you also mentioned that someone, um, you know, one of you all, um, had experience managing a coffee shop in New York, and, you know, can definitely tell, uh, you know, with the way that you guys run your truck. Um, I was, the, the other issue that I think, um, I want to make clear, um, is just how long, uh, just because I don't want to have you, you know, having to come out and talk to us, you know, every so often, um, if there's like, to get clarification on that process about, you know, whether this approval lasts for a year, and then you just kind of like reapply, um, and then, you know, we, we approve it like, almost like we do with, um, you know, liquor licenses.
I don't think there's any expiration. It's not, it's in our, it's in our bylaws. This is the first time I've ever found a request like this, the only time I've ever have been for just permitted events.
Yeah.
Which is permitted in a totally different way.
Support and help, like, all those say this is good for one year, right?
Right.
Our, our bylaw doesn't say anything, so I think it would be permanent.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then.
Well, actually, at our, at our leisure, because it's with a written permit, so.
And also the expiration of any applicable.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, and, so, so because it's the, it's, I want to, you know, make it easier for you guys so that we're clear, so you guys know, you know, what you have to do and what you're dealing with. Um, and then, you know, with, um, you know, with some of the points that the other members brought up about traffic, I mean, I think, and this, in, you know, for you all, you, you don't want to be causing complaints to be coming in. And so I think, uh, I'm not as, you know, as necessarily concerned about that, because I feel like you guys, you know, wouldn't want, would not want that to be happening. You can see that happening, right? You, you probably change something, so, um, I think you all are smart enough to figure that out, so.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so, um, certainly agree with a lot of the comments, um, that everyone's made. I haven't had a quartada yet, so I'll have to try that.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, I think one of the, I don't want to call it a concern, but I don't want to see Four Things Coffee coming to the town every time they want to go to Bliss Park or go to Wolf Swamp Fields. I, I think we should be, um, cognizant of the fact that there, that you've been doing this, um, and that, you know, if there is an issue that, um, you know, it will be addressed, um, in a proper way. Um, I think you run a good business, you have, um, have a good product. I went to the Nord Cross House, um, in East Long Meadow, that's where I first, um, saw the, the truck there. Um, so I fully support, um, the board, you know, taking measures to make this easier on Four Things Coffee and, and future, uh, food trucks that, that might come to town. I think it's, uh, an exciting town, uh, time for Long Meadow for these types of, uh, businesses, and I think it's gonna be well received, it already has been well received, and, um, you know, you've done all your homework, you, you have all of your, uh, paperwork in place. So my only concern was, like, beneath the saying, uh, you don't have to come to us every single time, you're somewhere, so. You know, all the best of luck and look forward to my quartada.
All right. So, Michael?
I have a question for the board, and that is, you know, is, is this a request for approval for Four Things Coffee? Is this a request for approval for food trucks in the town of Long Meadow? And if it's for one, at what point do, you know, is this kind of first come, first served? Or we, it gets in my set location? If we say there's these spots, we say, you know, one spot's taken, another truck can go there, but we're not putting multiple food trucks in, you know, so that we got four food trucks filling up softball games kind of thing or whatever's going on? I think we may not need to think of it, but I believe that it will occur when, shortly after this, and so we ought to keep that in mind as we approve, or as we move toward approval of this, and that's why I just reiterate, I think this concept of where is as important as what that we're doing.
Right, and so I, I think that's why it's important that we hear from Parks and Recreation in terms of those events, and then, um, and, and planning for the future, you know, because we are seeing more and more food trucks, and them also, and people are glad to see them, is because the food that they offer is getting better over time, you know? So, um, so we want to make sure that we move, you know, we move, um, move ahead in a way that's, that's helpful for your business and helpful for our town residents, and, um, you know, and, you know, this might be, this preliminary agreement might be, might change in a few years from now, but, uh, you know, we're hoping that we could cover, um, all the potential concerns that people would have, and so, hopefully we're patient.
Yeah, if I may also just state, so our season is from the end of frost to the first frost, so we are a seasonal business. Um, we will not operate outside, we operate in nineteen sixty-six Chevy Step Van, our, uh, truck is very old and it needs to sleep all winter, um, and our equipment cannot be out, um, you know, in freezing temperatures. So just something else that, you know, I think is important for you all to know. And, um, if easier, you know, we'd be happy to propose three to five locations that we'd be willing to, um, like, have as our locations or just, you know, a couple of places that we're interested in parking. And our times of operation are also, we want the morning people, that's what, we make coffee and we have pastries, we are like an eight to noon operation. From there, we, we don't really have, you know, maybe there's some afternoon coffee drinkers in town, but we are the morning coffee people, and that's, those are the people we're looking for. So, um, if that also helps kind of narrow down timeframe for us too. We, um, we don't want to be in the way of anyone, we think that we bring something good, you know, to the community. There are no bakeries in town, there's no small, uh, third wave coffee shop in town, uh, you only have Big Corpse in town serving coffee, so I feel like we offer something, excuse me, for sleepy parents, sports people, people who are out and, um, and want to have a really good product, a cup of coffee and pastry.
Yes, well.
I think the select board needs to understand that, that, and, and I'm, I'm not a coffee drinker, but, you know, at some point Starbucks is gonna come to us and say, I paid thousands of dollars a year in taxes to you in the town of Long Meadow, and this is taking away my business, because we get the morning coffee drinkers. And is the select board recognizing that I'm a taxpayer and the Starbucks here and maybe a food store later or something else? And I'm not sure what the food truck pays for the town, it's a great service for the residents. But what are we gonna do when somebody walks in here and says, I'm your taxpaying entity, and I'm telling you this hurts me?
We're talking to the taxpayer right now, but we.
They, they pay Long Meadow?
Oh, he lives here.
Well, she's a resident.
Live in town. Yeah.
I'm saying, you know, or, I'm, I'm not saying they will, but, but they may, and we need to be prepared. That's all I'm saying, and if the response is, sorry, everybody gets a fair crack at it, that's, that can be our response, but it, it's gonna.
Starbucks could, oh, make their own truck. Say impede with other business owners.
Say impede with other business owners, then have them make a truck.
And that's the answer. It's, it's fine.
That's business.
It's fine.
And this is nothing new. I mean, you know, you have restaurants and people selling hamburgers on the front and they go like, you know. So it's it's an ongoing thing and and, you know, our. Just to avoid those kinds of conflicts, you know, and hopefully from everything I've heard. I don't think Starbucks is going to be complaining or the kitchen or any of the other coffee vendors are in town. So, um, so let's proceed with, um, the next step would be to work with the town recreation department. Figure out your basic locations and come back to us. Um, I believe that's where we'll end this discussion, right? Okay. Well, thanks for joining us tonight and getting this.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Bye now.
We also have lots of beverages for non-coffee drinkers, lemonade, teas, iced tea, hot teas. Um, whatever you're into, we got it for you. See you soon.
Thank you. All right, so now. Discussion of special event one day fees. And this was something that I brought up before, um, and I asked Mike to benchmark. Uh, Long Meadow's short-term liquor license fees against neighboring cities and towns. Uh, the fee that we have is on the lower section of what people are charging, uh, are. Fifty dollars. And so. You know, I guess in bringing this forward, I would think that our our fee should go up to something like a hundred and twenty dollars. You know, for fifty dollars, because, um, the folks selling, uh, beer and wine, uh, at events on the green. Uh, will have access to thousands of people and they probably make that in a hundred and twenty minutes. Yes.
To me, this is a fee for, you're talking about one brewery.
Well, we have one that's paying now.
The only other applications we ever get are from the adult, uh, L A C C F.
Right. And those of, whether it's a population.
They they do pay, right?
But they, they're, they're not in a open area with thousands of people.
Well, I know, but why would, well, I.
Well, that's why I.
To me, to me, this is a a pinpoint charge.
Right.
Basically, if we raise this fee, we'd be raising it, we'd be charging the L A C C F twice a month.
No, I would say this is going to be a fee that would just be for events that would be, um. You know, outdoor events with large crowds, that that we would not increase the fee for, you know, town. You know, fixed, fixed residents and and, um, it's just a big difference. I mean, I hope to see the difference.
I don't know that we can, I, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission controls so much of this, Tom. I don't know that we have the authority to differentiate, but maybe we do. I I don't know. More importantly, isn't this something that should be discussed when we look at fees?
Well, you know, it would apply to future, it wouldn't apply to anything.
Right.
Currently, this applied for, but if if we look at other cities and towns, they must be doing this. I know in Springfield, they have, uh, like a, a brewery thing where there's ten breweries set up, right? I mean, you know, would our events turn into that? It would not surprise me. Would not surprise me. And, you know, I, you know, I don't think that. A brewery is going to report how much money they make, but I I saw the size of the line and you start calculating how much per drink. And for us to get fifty dollars, um, you know, there's a lot of potential for for difficulty. Due to having people, uh, large groups of people drinking. And so I just think like other cities that we shouldn't have the lowest fee here, uh, because. This is something that's developed in the last few years and so I'd like you to consider it and, you know. You may not agree at this point, but. Obviously, I didn't talk to anybody on the board to take us again and support it.
I'm here for the first time, Tom. I mean, it's something that, you know, could consider, but I think. Like Josh said, I think we consider for all our, I think we consider across the board is, are our fees too low? I mean, you know, one day liquor license fees historically were the the Boy Scouts who wanted to run a, a, you know, some dinner. The LA, you know, leaf that was L A F was doing some dinner or something like that. It's only recently that we've run into, you know, for-profit or-organization that's trying to do a one-day liquor license. Or is applied for a one-day liquor license. That's a whole different ballgame from the traditional Long Meadow. One-day liquor license, you know, and it was Saint Mary's Guild. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't somebody setting up something on the green because historically we didn't allow liquor sales on the green.
Right. And and you mentioned all nonprofit.
Right, right. I mean, you know, it, some degree, you know, I I'm surprised that everybody said, sure, we can okay liquor license. On the green for a a festival. I think it. Personally, it introduces a lot of potential for problems of serving liquor in public, but that was the sense of this board. You know, which is a whole different ballgame from believing there.
Yes, my, I got a, it's on the green. It can't be.
Okay, it's it's on private property.
Right. Um, and it's. That was fantastic last year. I didn't see any problems. People are very responsible. Doesn't mean it couldn't be, but any of it, one. An issue. Um, but I, the issue, I, to me, this is. If it, if we think that the town is, if it's costing our folks more time than fifty bucks covers. I think that's a good reason to raise it. I don't think pointing at one-way brewing and saying you're making too much money, we're going to charge you more. I feel very uncomfortable with that. If we want to raise it for another reason, sure, but, uh, that doesn't, that doesn't jog with me. And I I think in other cities, they have, they, because like Springfield has a bunch of, uh, parish halls. And maybe having a lot of, uh, events. And so there's, they probably hired someone. I know they have a big license department there all the time. They have a lot of people. They probably have somebody there. All they do is look at one days. So you're paying for that. Um, and we don't have. And I also, I I don't see us ever having a brewery event. We just don't have the room, um, because it couldn't be on the green. I mean, what else it would be?
Well, that's. Just, I guess it's just something to throw off very much.
I completely, uh, completely agree with Josh. Um, I've, and I, and Tom, I also can appreciate you bringing this up as well. I I think we do need to look, to Mark's point, we need to look at our fees. Um, I just, when I looked at this, um, over the weekend, I didn't see much supporting information. So I was just, kid, to be candid, coming into the meeting, I really didn't know what this was, um, in regards to. But I think we could bring this ju- discussion back up, um, when we look at our overall, uh, fees. But, yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that Josh said and, um, I do think that times have changed quite a bit in time, uh, in town and and the board as well. I think that's a good thing. Um, I think anytime we can bring, um, large groups of people together, um, in a respectful manner. With their TIPS certified, um, I think that's a good thing for the town. So, um, Josh mentions potentially a brew festival. Um, that's not really out of the picture. I mean, I, that could be something we do in the future, but, um. I fully, um, support what Josh said and I just think we need to take a look at, um, these fees at a different setting and and time.
Used to be a beer garden in United Center Field.
That's right. Uh, I was going to say the the German, uh, German beer garden, right?
Right, yeah. I just address, I I, just in my A B C C experience, I think we could have a different fee schedule for nonprofit versus profit, probably. I I don't know. I don't, yeah, I'm getting some nods from the town.
Yes.
Place. Uh, so I I think we could, I still wouldn't do it at this point, um, but I, we could, I think. But then I think we would essentially be subsidizing the nonprofits. If, in my head, we should only be raising this. I don't think we should be making money on this because we just don't know. If we want to cover administrative fees, that's a different story. And then if we want to give a break to nonprofits, I would, I would maybe consider that. But, um, at this point, based on what we're, on this discussion, I would not support it.
Okay, well, I don't know if there's any other comments, but, you know, when I asked about, you know, settings. You know, when we, there are times when we have fee settings, um, on the agenda, but it's been quite a long time. And this thing probably would not show up. So that's why I made it a special agenda item. You know, and I think that this is a, it's, again, it's a different situation. It's something the town hasn't seen in the past. We haven't seen, you know, for-profit folks, you know, selling liquor and and on the green and, um, and only having. Dollars and, you know, we can't say no to folks selling liquor on the green, but. Raising the fee to a more reasonable loan, we can.
But we we can certainly decline this one day liquor license.
Yeah, but I, it's not going to happen.
Well, don't say it's not going to happen. If the five people, three of the five people here say no, there's, it's a no. There's no guarantee, you know, we we don't have to rubber stamp every application.
This is true. All right. Um, did anyone else have any other comments or questions about fees that other towns are charging or? Or we can have?
We can provide a full benchmark.
Pardon?
We can provide a full benchmark when we do a full fees discussion later on.
Okay, great. Um, so now we have a, uh, street closure application. The Long Meadow Pride has applied for a s- street closure application for the event on Sunday, September seventeenth. Twenty twenty-three from eleven A M to four P M. The request is to close Long Meadow Street Interior, uh, East of the Green from Longfellow. Rooms and the application is attached with agenda with the police department recommendations. We need a motion to approve this request.
I move we approve the pride, street closure request for September seventeen.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. The Center School Carnival, Carnival, uh, Center School P P P T O has applied for a street closure application. For the annual carnival event on Friday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, with a rain date in September twenty-ninth. On four thirty P M to six thirty P M. The request is to close Long Meadows Interior, East of the Green from Fellow to Colton Place. And the application is attached to an agenda with police department recommendations. Is there a motion to approve this request?
I move we approve the Center School. Road closure request for September twenty-second with a rain date of September twenty-ninth.
Second.
Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor? So the, another one, uh, the One Way Brewing Festival, uh, One Way Brewing Company has applied for a, uh. For two one-day liquor license to serve the fall festival on Saturday, September ninth and Sunday, September tenth. From twelve P M to six P M in front of the Community House. The application along with the event layout and police department recommendation is attached to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the one-day liquor license?
I move to approve the one-day liquor license for September ninth through tenth for One Way Brewing.
So it's actually, it should be two-day, one-day, right? So two-day licenses. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes?
I I think the clarification, Josh, is you're 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 moving to approve two one-day liquor licenses.
Yeah.
As opposed to the one-day liquor license.
Uh, that's fair, yes.
Right?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, and we got the TIPS certification?
Those are, those are all in file. They just weren't included with the, we, we have them in in their file. They're good for a year or so.
Okay, there's no further discussion. I'm going for vote. All those in favor? Okay, do you have any? So EverSource Western Mass Natural Gas Reliability Project, there's an update on the MIPA case. Might as well work my lips, I'll be reading for a bit. So the, uh, the town has been, um, you know, there was, uh, there's several groups in town. Um, that are concerned about the building of a pipeline or increasing the size of the pipeline in town. That would go north and all of those groups have done their actions and the town has invested, um, a considerable amount of funds. With different engineers and different legal firms and Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Rejected EverSource's draft and environmental impact report at the end of July. And many of us have asked what's it mean to the town and the E F S V process. Working with the town's gas attorney, I'm able to provide the following information and update. The M E P A process is designed to require projects, including energy projects, that meet certain thresholds. To submit specific information to the MIPA office for review. EverSource's project requires MIPA review because it involves construction of a new fuel pipeline, five or more miles in length. Is a designated geographic area around one or more. E J populations and requires multiple agency, department and public utilities. Energy facilities sitting board, master department of transportation and potentially the office of D M safety reviews. EverSource submitted an environmental notification form on or about May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. And the town and other commenters provided comments on or before July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. In the filing, the town focused on important elements of the MIPA process. Of particular concern to the town, including, among other things, the need for the project and alternatives. To be as well as the impacts with respect to environmental justice, climate change, proposed routes, emissions, health and safety. Including the impacts, impacts on Wolf Swamp Road School, the Longfellow, Long Meadow. Country Club Dam on Shaker Road and key infrastructure, including water mains. On August eighth, twenty twenty-two, MIPA via the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs issued a certificate on the E N F. And required a draft environmental impact report, D E I R, a normal step. It is a certificate, Secretary slash MIPA requested an additional information about the project. Including responses to questions that were raised by the town and other commentators in the E N F comment process. EverSource submitted the D E I R on May first, twenty twenty-three, and comments were due on or before July seventh. On its comments filed on July seventh, twenty twenty-three, the town and other commentators noted that. D E I R as filed did not address important questions as posed by the secretary, MIPA and other commentators. The secretary, MIPA, agreed that EverSource did not provide information. And required by the MIPA process and determined that the D E I R does not adequately and properly comply with MIPA. And its implementation regulations. The remedy for this deficient D E I R is essentially a do-over. The filing of a supplemental D E I R, S D E I R supplementary, to address unanswered questions. Accordingly, the secretary, MIPA, required, uh, S, a supplementary D E I, D E I R. And requested additional information regarding, among other things, the need for the project. Particularly after the no-build alternative. Impacts from a potential increase in gas supply, including greenhouse gas emissions, construction impacts, risks prior regulatory approvals. Alternatives to the location of the P O D as compared to other locations, including the Meadows P O D alternative. Pipeline routing, environmental justice, including the health impacts, air quality, climate risk related to the gas distribution system. And the social costs associated with building or no-build and hybrid scenarios. There is no stated date for the filing of the S T E I R. The best guess, given the unanswered question, at least three months. According, assuming that the S E I R is accepted, EverSource will file a final impact, uh, a final environmental impact report. Both the S E I R and the F E I R will provide an opportunity for comments. In the past, the MIPA and the E F S V process proceeded on independent tracks. And were unrelated, except that the E F S V record case would not close before the MIPA process was complete. except that the E F S B. record case would not close before the MIPA process was complete. Although it's difficult to tell whether the current administration will require completion of the MIPA process before the E F S B. case, before the E F S B. case proceeds, if past precedent holds, it is likely that the E F S B. case will start before the MIPA review is completed. And that is the update from our, our legal consultant. And, you know, there's been a lot of stuff in the news. And so I imagine people are taking this as a, as a good thing because it really is gonna cause them to have to answer a lot more questions. I don't know if there's any comments from the board in regards to this news, yes?
I was just really shocked by, it was pretty tough on EverSource. And asked a lot of good questions, a lot of questions that Ms. Hoffer brought up when she met with us. And EverSource has got a more of an uphill battle. And on MIPA, they can get around that, but this is at least putting questions in before E F S B. So and I was glad to see some alternative citing ideas because I know that that's something that gets brought up a lot, which is, that's a busy part of our town. So I just think Attorney Kinnon did a good job, but there's a lot of good questions. And I appreciate his summary that she just read to us as well. Thanks, Josh.
Great. Any other comments?
I just think people need to take note of the fact that what you said is the E F S B. case will now likely to start before the MIPA decision is finalized, which means it's not really stopping anything, it's just kind of putting up a roadblock and slowing things down. I mean, the E F S B., it seemed to me was the final determiner anyway, which we were looking for. For people who don't know, that's the energy decision citing.
I don't think MIPA could ever stop it. That's what.
Right, right.
But even like best case scenario, MIPA couldn't say this is denied.
Right, but so this is, it's a pain in the neck for, but they're still gonna, I gotta believe they're gonna move the E F S B.
Yeah, thanks for what you're willing to do. You know, we could get lucky, you know, a change in administration, that may change in all their things and so on. All right. We'll keep you posted. Okay, the next item is the update on the Hammond County Regional Retirement Board, and attached to the agenda is a copy of the H. two-four-two-nine draft legislation, a copy of the written testimony prepared by Mark Gold for the Committee on Public Service Hearings on July twenty-sixth. And so, Mark, do you have anything to add?
I don't believe it does.
Happy to. I attended the, the, the hearing, that was in the Public Service Committee. I was the only one that was, that spoke on this. And the committee will decide, they'll discuss and decide, I haven't heard any, anything since then, but they're just taking a public comment now.
Okay. And so, Mark, do you want to just comment a little, little bit about the number, you know, you're talking about increasing the size of the board?
Well, the, the proposal, and Lynn did a great job with a comparison chart of what the board is now where it is. I mean, we're, the, the proposal of the legislation was asking the, the, the state legislature to, you know, direct the, the county regional retirement board to change the way they, they set their board. Right now, the board is essentially internally elected, except for one member who's elected by the treasurers of the agencies. And what we look, do is create a model kind of based on like Westcom or maybe the P V P A., where the member of communities vote for the members of, of the, of the board, which was what the proposal was, you know? Oh, you know, the thought process was, why would you possibly oppose greater, greater representation and greater, you know, of, of, of the members? But the legislature works in strange ways, and so we're not quite sure which, which way this is gonna go. But, you know, there, there was also, I submitted a written, you know, support, Lynn testified, submitted a written report, and also one of the numbers of the, the select board in Handen submitted some written comments to them as well. So they, they got several comments, but I, you know, so we'll see where it goes.
Okay, good. Well, we appreciate your work, both you putting into this because it definitely, you know, affects employees of the town who, you know, can get their, their retirement through the Hammond County Retirement Board. And if they're not running efficiently and their board is not the best representation, then, you know, these are the kind of steps that we want to be part of. So thank you for, for stepping up on that. Any other comments or questions? Okay. So the next thing is we have a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they're looking for an alternate, alternate member.
Can I just comment on this?
Okay.
I, I was the alternate member.
Yes.
And, and the primary member was Jim Berry from where I think, or some, you know, Delta Town. He resigned, and so now I'm, they asked me, and I'm the primary member.
Okay.
I'm not sure we need to act on this, frankly. I, I think this is a blanket letter they sent out to everybody in District Two.
Okay.
And, I mean, we're happy to, and I'm, I'm fine if you do that, but if there's nobody who's burning to be part of this, and frankly, a lot of this is, sitting there listening to the Mass D O T. talk about traffic studies, you know, I don't think we're obligated to appoint an alternate because I'm the primary member.
Okay.
But, but I, you know, I don't want to stop anybody, I just wanted to tell them.
So the alternate member attends every meeting?
I, I did, and, and, and they, you know, I think they're supposed to because, because, you know, I, I used to show up and a couple times Jim Berry wasn't there, so I, I vote, you know, but, but for the most part, it's, it's, I don't think, no, they need to. But the problem is, if, if you don't, I mean, you know, we, it's difficult, I mean, these guys are talking D O T. code, you know, I mean, so you, you gotta kind of keep up with, with, with what's going on in these, in these things. And it takes a, it took me a long time to figure out what they're doing, because they only talk about, oh, project six-two-seven-three-five, you know, you gotta understand, but that's the one I'm just.
Okay. And the meetings are held, right?
Well, they're, they've been Zoom lately, but they're, yeah, they're at the P V P. P V P. C. facility, which is down in Congress Street in Springfield.
Yeah, Congress, yeah. So if people, you know, see, they want to.
By the way, we also have to point out that Long Meadow resident Walter Gunn is the representative from the P V., P V. P. C. So Long Meadows actually got pretty good representation on this committee.
Yeah, so that, you know, that was attached to the agenda, was sent out as a, to a blanket to all the P V. P. C. communities, asking for people to submit candidates who might be interested in being an alternate member from these specific sub-areas. It's a long shot that someone would get selected for Long Meadow, but I figured it's worth putting this forward because I think it's been really valuable having Mark there and bringing back reports to us. You have to be an elected official, so I can't, I can't put my name in, I can't have a D W. member do that. So I just brought it here to you so you could decide, we have to reply by August eighteenth if you are interested. We don't have to, nobody has to put in that board.
But the other side is, this is a group that really decides which projects get funded which year, right?
Uh, yeah, in theory, I think the D O T. Department of Transportation has a lot more to say about it. What you get to do is, is lobby for your case. I mean, you know, some, the mayor of Northampton may say, we really need this moved up, so don't knock us down, that kind of thing. It's more of a lobbying opportunity than it is the deciding opportunity.
Okay, so if those who want some lobbying experience, it sounds like you might want to consider, you know, seeing about being an alternate member, so that's great.
It's, it's just a monthly two-hour Zoom.
Right. You're interested, Lynn will send you an email with a link to submit the application of interest. It's due by August eighteenth, which is, before you know it, we'll be there.
Or should we, should we decide if there's one person that wants to?
Sure. Before from the select board?
We, we could do whatever we want, yeah. We're nuts. Everyone.
Come on, Josh.
Everyone's, everyone step forward. So, yeah.
There's no obligation. You want to pass on it right now, that's fine.
It'll come up again.
Well, we could, well, we could, one, more than one pushes the board aside too. So that's the only option. And so, oh. Not that anyone lost spite, but.
I'll buy it.
Yeah, that's nice, yeah. Good, that's great. I, I think you'll learn some good stuff.
I'll send you the link, you just have to fill out the form.
Okay, great, thank you.
And, and you'll also learn a lot about, you know, what's planned for the whole valley.
Thank you.
You will.
Yes.
And it's only if Mark can go, so you just have to make sure you go.
Yeah, yeah. You'll check on his attendance, which I'm sure is still, so that's not, just kidding. Okay, so the last thing here, well, the next thing here is the Local Casino Mitigation Advisory Committee Alternate Member. So, you know, you see on the agenda, each year the State Gaming Commission asks us to appoint, well, we have an appointee, and our representative is Lou Cornet, and he's doing a great job and is keeping the town manager informed, and they have been asking him to tell him, who's, who's your alternate, who's your alternate? And so he said, well, could we, could we get an alternate? And when he originally looked at this position, there was only two people who stepped up. And so the, the resident, the other resident who was not appointed is interested in serving as the alternate, so we have to decide if we want to just appoint him as an alternate because he came in second place the last time, or if we want to sort of open this up and do a, you know, go through a lot of process.
He's clear on conflicts?
Yeah?
I don't know, I, it's been a while.
We have to refresh that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just saw it, it would be a special important.
Yeah, my, he has no other connections, or he's not on any other committees in town, I don't believe, and he is retired. And I guess I would say, I would like to just see this person apply.
Josh, why do you think that he needs to be a special?
That's what the, so the draft list says. I, I don't see the harm of putting it out there, but if we advertise the first time and we only got two applicants, I, I don't know if there will be a lot of, I'm grateful for someone to step up, but I don't know if we need to advertise this again. If he's interested, that's fine by me.
I mean, it's, it says an alternate, it's not even as though, you know, we've already got a primary.
It's not gonna be a voting number, okay?
And, and I think one of those people will recruit, but also.
There's gonna be knocking down.
All right, so, so do we need a motion to just approve, to name this person as an alternate?
I'll make a motion when we appoint David Ruppel, the alternate of the Local Casino Mitigation Advisory Committee.
Second. All those in favor?
So thank you, thank you for his interest, we appreciate it.
Yes, we'll bring him up, retire him. It's good. So the regional select board meetings, we've, we've had those, you know, fairly regularly. I think during COVID, we stepped back a little bit, but the town of Wolverhampton has reached out to set up a regional select board meeting. The agenda of the town includes Veteran Services District, a first-time discussion of establishing a Veteran Service District would happen, expansion of a regional dispatch, because more towns are, are interested in that than were in the beginning when we set it up and Chickify joined us. Assessment of the shared public health services, that was something we recently initiated. Other regional topics of interest, the meeting's scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-ninth. And, you know, in, in the past, you know, as a ward, people have all tried to make it. I don't know if there's any interest in attending, or if we have any agenda items that you'd want to see on a regional, not all discussed.
Lynn, are you going to this?
If there's representation, if, we haven't had representation though, if it, if no one from Long Meadow is going, I don't know that I necessarily need to be there. We get together once a month as the regional managers, okay?
And this is just an annual?
We haven't done this in a bit, we did it a couple of times, we did it once before COVID in-person, and then we did at least once or twice virtually during COVID, and it's been at least a year or two since we've held them.
Yeah. Mark, did you have?
No, I was just gonna say, we, we did do it routinely in the past, and that, of value was meeting the other select board members in the other, other communities. And, and I think we, we've had in the past, you know, state reps and, and, you know, state senators attend. Unfortunately, there hasn't been a lot of individual issues that are of common interest, but now that we're doing more regionalization, I think that's more likely to happen. But even, I remember the means, we used to talk about, you know, tax ceiling, and most of them, we don't care about the tax ceiling, so, you know, and, and we, you know, it, it was really, there wasn't a lot of, of issues in common, but I think now with the regionalization and what Nick Rowe has, has identified here, I think, I, I, I plan on attending, and I urge other people to attend if they, if they're free.
Yeah. I, I would go, it sounds great. And I'm sad, I thought that, but I think it'd be valuable.
Yeah. We'd go to Wolverhampton. The last one in Wolverhampton, we got to meet our, who we didn't know would be our future superintendent of schools, Marty O'Shea, he, he talked at that meeting, and then luckily we got into Woodfalls. So, I don't know, would we consider it on your schedule if you could go? I think it's good, like, Mark was saying, it's nice to meet the other reps, because you only see them, you know, at the state convention, but this would give us a chance. There's, the other information on here is that Paul McNeil of Close Community has sent an email asking the select boards to consider hosting David Jernigan from B U. School of Public Health to present on best practices for smaller municipalities managing alcohol licensing and policy. He's been presenting to town select boards and city councils across the Commonwealth over the last year. Mr. McNeil has spoken with Dr. Jernigan about his interest in paying a visit to Hammond County to present his most recent findings with his work with the Massachusetts Alcohol Policy Coalition. He is interested and available at no cost to Long Meadow, and would be interested in hosting, so would we be interested in hosting Dr. Jernigan here? And maybe it would be something that folks regionally would be interested also. I don't know if you guys have ever thought anything more about our alcohol policy, but this, you know, this person sounds very knowledgeable. I don't know what people think about hosting him.
So that it came up as part of the regional conversation, whether or not this would be a topic we'd want to submit for the Wolverhampton, Handen, East Long Meadow group conversation? There was a request from Paul McNeil from Close that it could be a regional initiative, a regional conversation, or it could just be a Long Meadow conversation.
Right. So his report on health and safety in Massachusetts with B U. was incredibly useful. Dr. Jernigan is best known for his action, research approach to the issue of alcohol advertising, marketing, and promotion, and his influence on young people. His work has led to better advertising regulations and a clearer understanding of the evolving structure of the alcohol industry. His work is policy relevant and scientifically rigorous. Dr. Jernigan has been very active in translating research findings into policy and practice. He testifies regularly at city, state, and national levels around alcohol advertising in youth, alcohol availability, and taxation. He also trains advocates around the world using the best evidence. So we could, we could talk, think about it, and if you think it would be something of interest to us, and maybe it would be something we do in conjunction with the school department or the parent-teacher associations, because they might be interested in looking how young people are affected by. because they might be interested in looking how young people are affected by advertising and, you know, looking at school policies and so forth. So, and again, you know, when we look at our population, you know, just about everyone drinks, there's only, I think, almost a 97% of people have drank alcohol. There's only a small percentage that don't drink any alcohol at all. Of people who are drinkers, 80% of people have no problem with alcohol. 80%, 20% move from having a casual relationship with alcohol to having an intimate relationship with alcohol, which means that they become alcoholics. It creates a lot of dysfunction in their family, in their communities. And so we're really just looking at ways to address keeping, you know, advertising and the role it plays in causing people to become part of that, 20%, you know. And so, you know, I guess we'll just consider it. I don't get a sense from anybody there's a strong feeling that we should bring him in at this point or?
I can't send this around, it's harder to hear than it is to read.
Okay, so then, do we have some information that he sent us, promotional information?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think the forum is also important. Yeah, whatever forum we're considering, is it only before a select board meeting or is it some other kind of forum where this guy can really speak a little bit more and get in touch? Or is it, you know, it's tough going in the select board.
Right, yeah, I agree. That's why, if we could look at.
I know there's groups in town who'd love to co-sponsor this guy or bring out people who are just doing, but I think we should look into that.
Okay, so let's do that and then we'll revisit this. Great.
So just closing out the conversation on the regional meeting, I'll let Wilbraham know that we do think we'll have some members attend. We'll post it as a meeting.
I think you just confirm with me sometime next week.
We have three, I have to let him know by.
An email asked by Mark.
Oh, that's for you. All right.
Yeah, well, so thanks, I'll let him know.
All right, and so we've gotten some letters, correspondence. Are you adjourned or is there any comments or?
I guess, you know, the question, the only one that speaks in the ears, this secret for Long Meadow pride. I don't want to overwhelm them, but, you know, we ought to have a representative from the select board there. You know, Tom, if you're available, you're probably the titular head of the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think before Mike responded, so I had responded and just told her that, you know, since Tom is the chair, you got his first dibs, but I'd be happy to see.
Okay, so, okay, so somebody's gotten back.
They both spoke last year and they were happy to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, kept it short, so.
Okay.
Even I was.
So, yeah, I plan on being there. And if others don't want to speak, it's all good, they'd be open to that also.
Yeah, if you plan on being there, just cheer me on, it's up to me.
Yeah.
I just think we were kind of stopped.
September is far enough, I don't know if my schedule could change, but I plan to make that. And, okay, so I guess that's it, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay, what's happening?
Second.
Okay, all those are favored? Randomous, thank you very much. We'll be meeting, all right, 5th, February 5th, we'll see you then, thank you.